And of the July 14, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Just a quick housekeeping announcement. I do want to apologize that we don't have the full hearing room, but on behalf of democracy in our great country, early voting is taking place behind us, and this is a normal early voting location, so I appreciate you, your patience with that. We will have a TV outside in the lobby so that nobody will miss it. So if your case is closed, or it's on consent, if you can quietly make your way out so that the other people where we're considering the agenda, that would be very, very helpful. So, thank you for your cooperation, and sorry about that. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Have the planning commissioners reviewed the agenda? Is there a motion? Second? Motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it? The agenda is adopted now. Item C, which is the approval of the June 9th and June 23rd minutes. Has everyone reviewed those? Any changes, edits? There's been a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving both the agenda items, the minute items of June 9th and June 23rd, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it? The minutes have been adopted. Now, we're on to item D, which is recognition of council members. And I wrote these down as I saw the council members, so if y'all just wave or want to come up and speak at this time. I saw Councilman Bedney first. You want to come up, or come on up? Welcome. Maybe push the, see if the microphone's not on. If you could.
Little black button on the.
Somebody could.
Kelly says it might not be working. Maybe try one of the other ones and wanting to get a chair or something.
Hold on. Let's see if it's working. It's complicated. Can we try one of those and get a chair on the side, maybe? Councilman, why don't you just come up to the podium over here, our podium, and then we can, there we go. I feel turned this one off. Thanks, guys.
I feel special.
Takes a village. All right.
Anyway, and I was, thank you for your service before, and I, having been on the BCA, I know that this is hard work, and I appreciate what you guys do. I'm here today to talk about a legislation that is not mine. It's on District 4. It's the number three on your agenda, 2016 SP dash 028 dash 001. The first time we had to deal with this site was about four years ago. We had a community meeting with councilmember Banks, and I co-hosted this meeting. And we had about 200 people that showed up at different meetings to discuss the issue of the reselling of this property. You guys may remember, I think it came actually to the council as well. That was one of the many times where I got to work with Mr. White on a project. I mean, opposite side of Mr. White.
Good experience.
Yeah. But the issue on that side, and this side is literally, I can see that side from my house, pretty much like Sarah Palin said about Russia. I mean, I'm like a quarter of a mile from this side. I'm really close, but it's not my district. It's on the other side of Nolan Street Road. And so, when I moved to that district, that was like 16, 17 years ago. It was all farms over there, and it was very undeveloped, and we were in a subdivision. And then, once my house got built, then we moved to that subdivision. But I've been there for a long time, and I can tell you that the issue that we had 16, 17 years ago is the same issue we're having today, just worse. And that's the issue of the deficiencies on the infrastructure. We really have a problem with the roads not having the capacity to move people around. Nolan Street Road is a road that is, has over 20,000 trips a day. It's one of the gateways to the city, and people can barely drive through there. And the problem is, as people get frustrated because of connectivity, they start carrying through the neighborhoods, and it has an impact on quality of life. So, by not addressing issues of growth, we are having an impact on quality of life for people that live all throughout the southeast. So, my first comment was really directed to the developers. I know that Councilman Swob probably told them to talk to me. I mean, I never got a call from them. I actually visited a meeting they had, gave them my card, asked them to call me. I never got a phone call. And that's a problem, because I really can't talk with Councilman Swob about legislation that goes against the rules. So, I was hoping to talk to the developers to see if we could find a way to move this legislation forward without having an impact in the community. Unfortunately, that never happened. I make it a point to tell any developer on my side of the district to talk to the neighboring council members, because I think at the end of the day, we risk having a situation like this where like a part of the community gets disenfranchised. So, to developers here, if, with respect of the commission, really try to talk to adjacent council members as you are moving forward projects, because that's going to make your life easier on the long run. We are working on addressing all the infrastructure deficiencies. I recently talked to the mayor's office, the department, the infrastructure person, Mr. Suban, and Doug Sloan. And we're going to start working on a deficiency map for the southeast, trying to identify all the problems we're having that are slowing down development and growth, trying to see if we can address them in a smart way so we can have sustainable development. But that hasn't happened yet. We still have a variety of problems that we don't control, and so it becomes a zero-sum game. There are all these developments that were approved before, out of my time. As a matter of fact, right there on Nolan Street Road, there are developments on my side of the street and on the other side of the street that are coming online now that the economy is getting better. And I just don't want to get to the point where I have to, where I have to start downzoning projects. But if we get to the point where we're going to approve every development without thinking about the impact that it has on the infrastructure, something we have to give. You either grow here, or you cut here, but it has to be sustainable, because the roads are not getting any wider, the schools are not getting any bigger, the parks are not getting any bigger. So, we have to test the growth we're having based on the already-approved zoning that we have already. And I can tell you, there is a lot of stuff on Nolan Street Road in my district that was approved before my time that is coming online all at the same time. If you guys drive on Bell Road, for example, there are thousands of apartments being built that were approved years ago. So, that's a big concern. So, I'm asking you to consider the impact on the infrastructure as you're looking at new development. I know you do, but I just wanted to bring you that point of view, that we are already faced with all these projects. They're dormant, and they are coming online thanks to our great economy. People are being empowered to bring them online. So, one solution that we are trying to work on, I know Council Lady Blaylock and I are interested, and we're trying to get other council members, is to put together a UDO that will help us have a balanced approach to growth on Nolan Street Road, that will help make sure that we look at all the dormant and all the new projects and find a way that is sustainable. So, the problem on Nolan Street Road is that it's a state road. They are now in the process of widening it. One of the reasons that it's happening is because at that meeting four years ago, somebody from TDOT that I invited came and got stuck on traffic for like 45 minutes. And so, he's like, wow, we really got to fix this. And then, Jason Powell, our legislator, has been a great champion to put this project to the top of the list, but it's moving really slow. And they are now going through the easement process, and they are supposed to finish in a year, but we all know, people sue, and then when they sue, the whole process slows down or stops. Then, they have to move the infrastructure, and we don't know when that will happen. And the funding for the construction of the road hasn't been approved yet. I mean, we're all hoping that it will be approved, but it's not. So, we don't really have any way to know for certain when will this happen. So, that brings me to the project. This is a project that, if the road had the capacity, it will be a decent project. But the road doesn't have the capacity. And I think that unless you guys can put a language, and I don't think that we can legally do that, that says that this project can start construction after the funding for the road happens, I will ask you to defer or to vote against it, because it's really adding to the unsustainability of the model that we are pushing right now. And we want to be growth-friendly. We want to be sustainable in how we grow. We don't want to, I mean, I have people that are asking me to do a moratorium. I don't want to do a moratorium. I think that will be, that will be a last resource to deal with the fact that we are crying for help on building this infrastructure. But I'm kind of painting into a corner when growth that is existing, and it's been coming more and more online. If we don't have a way to make sure that it's sustainable, then we get in trouble. So, I don't know if I was clear enough, but I'm asking you to consider that this road is not, the funding is not approved, and that you vote against this project at this time, or that you put a language on the legislation that can only start building after the road is widened.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And before we get to the next council person, there are a lot of seats in the audience that are still open, so we're kind of like a Southwest flight today. All the seats are filled, but there's empty seats up here. So, if people would come on in and take a seat, if you would like, instead of having to stand, it's going to be a longer meeting, so. And then, I saw Councilman Scott Davis. You want to wait till your items come up, or, I'm assuming? Yeah? No? But you can, actually, we got this microphone working over here, Councilman. We think.
How are you? I want to thank you for volunteering your time, commissioners. I want to thank the planning staff for their hard work, and I want to thank my colleague on the council and my affordable housing commissioner, Mr. Bedney, who you just saw. They worked extra hard yesterday, even with interruptions from me and other constituents of mine, and they are working hard to help with affordable housing. I've asked for two deferrals today. One is off of Elvira. That is a project they want to work with the mayor's office and with my colleagues on creating a large scale of affordable housing for that area. And more importantly, they want to get in front of the neighbors of the area more thoroughly. There was a miscommunication, and they missed the June community meeting.
I think it's item 37.
I believe so, sir. Also, I will be asking, which I've already talked to staff about deferring my other one off of Trinity Lane, the Queen, the Duke, the Royal, also, for a little bit. And there's another one off of Overby I've asked for a deferral to confer with staff a little further so we can get an approval. Everything on consent, you know, hopefully, if it stays on consent, you won't hear from me again. But more importantly, the most important one here for me today is the one that's on consent, which is West Greenwood. This is a constituent of mine, which you've heard me say all the time, what I do for the development community, I will do for my constituents. And they have waited a long time to build their daddoo. They were left out of the original plan, which me and my colleagues worked so hard on. Thank you, Council Lady Berkeley Allen. And more importantly, right now, is, you know, what we do for the wealthiest of our people, we need to do for the working class, and that's why I'm here to do, to advocate in front of him, for him, and to make sure his legislation for his daddoo, for his property, gets passed, because he has a family support. He has his little one here, and I wanted to stay on consent so we can get his son home to bed. So, I just want to thank you for your support and those matters, and I hope you have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brett Withers?
I'll wait until I'm.
You'll wait to your end? Okay. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Robert Swob?
I'm chairman, but I will wait until I'm.
Wait? Okay. Councilman Kobe Sledge? I saw you. Come on. Here, this one's working right here.
Is it working?
Yeah, it's working. Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just wanted, I've got two items that are in District 17, that are items 17 and 18. That's 2016 SP 051 dash 001 and 2016 SP dash 052 dash 001. These are two items that are actually right in the same area, and if it, I believe it's still on consent, but in case it isn't, I just wanted to give a brief description. This is in Chestnut Hill, and I've worked with the developer. We are working under sort of the guidelines that have put forth, been put forth over the last couple of weeks regarding the affordability measures that I think that this body will be taking up next week. So, I just want to let you know that the applicant has been very willing to work within those, and I think we're going to get something that, if it doesn't mirror it, it'll look very close to it. So, I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council Lady Kathleen Murphy?
I'll speak with my neighbors.
Okay. And then, Council Lady DeCosta Hastings?
Council Lady.
Councilman, sorry. Made a mistake. Sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, Council Lady.
Boy, girl, boy, girl.
Yeah, boy, girl, boy, girl. It's good to see all of you guys. I was just calling, and I am going to ask for a deferral, because I need to put all the pieces together, because anything that goes on within my district, I need to make sure that we do this thing the right way. You know, I understand that what we had, we're looking to increase the spectrum of what we're doing in our area. Of course, the, with us, we have a lot of metro-owned parcels within our district. They will be a lot of things that are coming, and we have a lot of vacant properties that are around these areas as well. So, you guys pray for me, because I have a lot of work to do, and it's nerve-wracking. But nevertheless, I need to just take another opportunity to overlook this, and I'll be back before you. It'll make it a lot easier for me to go through this side and make sure everything is okay than rather going through approving it by myself. All right? So, I thank you guys very, very much, and have fun. I see you got a big schedule.
Councilman, how long would you like the deferral?
Just one.
One meeting?
Yeah, one meeting. One meeting so that we could bring it back up. We'll have everything together by then. We just need to go.
That'll be July 28th. Is that okay? Or do you need to go to the first meeting in August?
July 28th will be fine.
Okay. We'll defer to, we'll put on the deferral list to July 28th. Without objection, we'll add it to the deferral list, which we haven't got to yet, but we will. Thank you, Councilman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right. Boy, girl, boy, girl. Council Lady Karen Johnson, I saw.
I was trying to find where this item is on the agenda. It was actually supposed to be added, and I don't see it on the agenda, but it's in regards to the Habitat for Humanity project that is proposed for Anderson Road. Again, we have a low-income home development that is being proposed to be finalized in terms of their plan on Anderson Road. I'm here to state on the record that we, as a community, embrace low income again, and we gladly accept Habitat for Humanity. Hopefully, I'm here for the right gen item. I don't know if it's been put on consent. We will finalize that after I speak. If I have to come back, then I'll address it at that time. But I'm just now receiving information on that and had asked for it to be placed back on the agenda, because there was going to actually be an administrative approval versus it being on the agenda. So, therefore, I stated my concerns with that, with it needing to be on the agenda so the community could be aware that Habitat for Humanity will be building 17 homes off of Anderson Road. So, it'll be another low-income community in District 29. Thank you, city, for continuing to bring that to our area as well, because we welcome that. I'm also here to talk on, to speak on 14A and 14B. I would like to ask for a one-meeting deferral on that so that I can find out more details from the applicant. They have not disclosed what they're proposing to do with this change. I think it's being changed to CL, am I correct?
CSA.
C.
CSA.
CSA. And so, I just would need some time to be able to meet with them, to find out what the plan is, so that, you know, I can inform the community and have some information to share prior to any approval here.
Council Lady, that particular, those items, 14A and 14B, is that the one that you're speaking of?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's on the consent agenda, and...
Well, I'm going to move it off the consent agenda and request a one-meeting deferral.
Well, we would have to, is the applicant in the audience for 14A or B? Okay. The applicant will have to, you can kick it off the consent agenda, and we can consider deferring it at that point, unless the applicant is willing to defer with the council lady. How about this? How about while we're, we're going to consider the consent agenda after the deferral motion? If you could, maybe...
I would like to pull it off the consent.
Okay, we'll pull it off the consent, but if you could talk to them about a deferral so that we can have it happen.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Lady. Appreciate it. If y'all could get with the council lady, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, I saw another councilman, my former seatmate, Councilman Jim Schulman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. I'm not exactly sure why I am here.
We figured that, but...
But Council Lady Sharon Hurt, who is also an AT-Large member and who now has been given the task to take care of District 1, is unfortunately not able to be here today. So, she asked me if I would come and address any issues that you all might have. I think she's got several issues up today. I'm not sure if she has taken, I think she sent you all a letter, that you may have, but I read that letter, and I'm not sure if she's taken any certain positions, but I just want to make sure that you got the letter, and I'm going to stay here, and I'm available to help her constituents or address any issues that they may have with them as they go through this program.
Councilman, also, if you would, talk to the staff and see, just make sure that we're doing the right thing on these particular items that you're here for.
Okay.
She has several.
Yeah, I know she has several.
Okay.
So, I will check with staff and make sure, but I, if it's okay with the...
Well, everything's on consent, I believe, except 12A and 12B, so...
Oh, that's even better.
Okay.
So, she asked me a couple of days ago, and I got the letter yesterday, but I told her I would be here.
Okay. And we have the letter?
So, thank you for hearing me, and it's nice to be back in front of the commission.
Thank you, Council. We have a full day of council members here. All right. Any other council members? All right. So, now we're on item E, which is items for deferral, withdrawal. Carrie?
There are several items on the deferral and withdrawal agenda. Before I get to that, I will notify the audience that if an item is deferred to the January 28th Planning Commission meeting, that meeting, I'm sorry, July 28th Planning Commission meeting, that meeting will be held at 2601 Bransford Avenue, which is the Metro Public Schools Administration Building. Starting August 11th, the meetings will return here to the Sunny West Conference Center. The first item for deferral, withdrawal is item number 2, 2016 Z 011 TX 001 on page 5 of your agenda. This is a request to amend section 174120 of Title 17 pertaining to the termination of inactivity of planned unit development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 4, 2016 SP 031 001 on page 5 of your agenda is the Burkett Road Retail SP, a request to rezone from AR 2A to SPC zoning for property located on Nolan Street Pike to permit a commercial development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 25, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 6, 2016 S 115 001 on page 6 of your agenda is the Haynes Park subdivision, section 1, re-subdivision of reserve parcel. This is a request for final plat approval to remove the reserve parcel status and to create one lot for property located at 117 Haynes Park Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 7, also on page 6 of your agenda, 2005 P 030007 Ravenwood Phase Supervision, is a request to revise a preliminary plan for a portion of PUD located on Stone River Road to permit 121 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 26, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 8, 2016 Z 044 PR 001, a request to rezone from R 10 to CS zoning for a portion of property located at 911 Murphysboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 25, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 9, is also on the deferral, withdrawal agenda, is 2016 Z 052 PR 001 on page 7 of your agenda. This is a request to rezone from various zoning districts to RM 40A for various properties on Kingston Street, Queen Avenue, Duke Street, Prince Avenue, Eastern Lee Lane, and Sultana Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 11, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10 on your agenda, 2016 Z 053 PR 001 on page 6 of your agenda, is a request to rezone from OR 20 and R 6 to MULA zoning for properties located on Osceola Avenue and Lennox Avenue. The staff recommendation is to defer to the August 11, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 11, 2016 Z 065 PR 001, is a request to rezone from RS 5, CL, CN, IWD, and RM 20A zoning for properties located on Jones Avenue, Cherokee Avenue, and Chickasaw Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 15 on page 8 of your agenda is 2016 SP 029 001 Lebanon Pike SP. It's a request to rezone from CL and RS 10 to SPR zoning for properties located on Lebanon Pike to permit up to 36 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 26 on your agenda on page 9 is 2016 136 001, I'm sorry, 2016 S 136 001. It's 2811 Wimbledon. It's a request for consta-plan approval to create three lots on property located at 2811 Wimbledon Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 28 on page 10 of your agenda, 6684 P 001 Lexington Residential PUD Periodic Review, is a request for periodic review for a portion of property on Lexington Residential PUD located on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Next is item 33 on page 12 of your agenda. It's 2016 Z 083 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 5 to RM 20A zoning for properties located on Weekly Avenue. The staff recommendation is to defer to the July 28, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 34, 2016 Z 084 PR 001, is a request to rezone from R 10 and RS 10 to OR 20 zoning for properties located on Liberty Lane and People's Court. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 11, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 35 is a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 40A zoning for property located at 2007 Overby Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 11, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. And item 37 is 2016 Z 089 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from R 6 to RM 40A zoning for properties located along Elvira Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 11, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, on 14A and B, have they agreed to defer?
No. Will, I'll let it go ahead and stay on consent.
You'll let it stay on consent? Okay.
David's fine.
Okay, thank you, council lady. I'll make sure you're good.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so to be clear here, these are the items for deferral/withdrawal, and we'll go slow because there's a lot of them. So it's Item Number 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 15, 26, 28, 33, 34, 35, and 37. Is that correct, Carrie?
That's correct.
All right. So commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral/withdrawal. Is there a motion to, for these items? Has been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Eyes have it, these items will be deferred or withdrawn. Next, Carrie?
First, a legal notice. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on in a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be pulled from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is Item Number 5, 2016SP 033 001 Laramie Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from R 8 to SPR zoning to permit up to 32 residential units for property located on Laramie Avenue and Nashua Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 14A, 2016CP 013 001, on Page 7 of your agenda, the Antioch Preslate Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the Antioch Preslate Community Plan by changing the current T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy to T3 community center policy for property located at 2234 Murphysboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case is Item 14B, 2016Z 088 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from OL to CSA zoning for property located at 2234 Murphysboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 16, on Page 8 of your agenda, the 2016SP 049 001 Hawkins Street Townhomes SP. It's a request to rezone from R 6 to SPR zoning for property located at 1209 Hawkins Street to permit up to four residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 17, 2016SP 051 001, is 21 and 23 Worf Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from R 6 to SPR zoning for property located at 21 and 23 Worf Avenue to permit up to six residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 18, 2016SP 052 001, the Trimble Street SP. It's a request to rezone from R 6 to SPR zoning for property located on Trimble Street and First Avenue South to permit 10 detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 19, 2016SP 053 001, it's Germantown Storage SP. It's a request to rezone from IR to SPC zoning for property located at 1232 Third Avenue North to permit a six-story commercial mixed-use building. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 20, 2016SP 055 001, on Page 9 of your agenda, is 1324 Second Avenue North SP. It's a request to rezone from IR and IG to SPU zoning for property located at 1324 Second Avenue South to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 21, 2016SP 059 001, 1003 West Greenwood Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from RS 5 to SPR zoning for property located at 1003 West Greenwood Avenue to permit a DDU in addition to all uses permitted by the RS 5 zoning district. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 22, 2016S 006A 001, is a request to amend the platted rear step back from 20 feet to 9 feet for property located at 208 Stokesboro Court. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 23, 2016S 125 001, is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 223 Nunley Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 24, 2016S 126 001, is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located on West Lawn Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item Number 25, 2016132 001, is a request for concept plan approval to create five lots on property located at 2535 Perimeter Place Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 27, 2016S 138 001, on Page 10 of your agenda, is the Maplewood Manor Re-Subdivision of lots 35 and 36. It's a request for final plat approval to create four lots on properties located at 901 and 903 Virginia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 29A, 6177P 002, is the Gifford Commercial PUD. A request to amend a portion of a PUD for property located at 220 Gifford Place to permit a boarding house. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The associated case, 29B, 2014Z 053 PR 001, is a request to rezone from CS to RM 20 zoning for property located at 220 Gifford Place. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 30, 7274P 001, the Globe Best Western on Glastonbury. It's a request to amend a portion of the Camelot on the Parkway PUD for property located on Glastonbury Road to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 31, 93P 023 001, the Gateway of Hermitage, Phases 5 and 6. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of the Gateway of Hermitage PUD for property located at 4030 Shergard Way to permit vehicular rental leasing uses where hotel space was previously approved. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item Number 32, 2016Z 067 PR 001, on Page 11 of your agenda, is a request to rezone from CS to MEGA zoning for property located at 8 Leagann Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 36, 2016Z 087 PR 001, is a request to rezone from AR 2A to RS 10 zoning for properties located on Old Hickory Boulevard. A staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 38, 2016Z 090 PR 001, is a request to rezone from CL to MULA properties, for zoning for properties located on East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Under Other Business, we also have Item 39, new employee contract for Marty Sewell and contract renewals for Michael Briggs and Kareemee Sharp, and a contract amendment for Greg Claxton, as well as Item 43, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Carrie. So we'll go slow and make sure we got these right on the consent agenda for the commissioners. The first is Item Number 5, 14A, 14B, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29A, 29B, 30, 31, 32, 36, 38, 39, and 43. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items that are on the consent. Is there a motion?
Motion, please. There was only consent, second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Oppose, no. Eyes have it. And so to the audience, if your items have been on the consent agenda and they just passed, so there are also, so why don't we do this, I know there'll be a lot of people kind of in and out, and since we're in such a tight space, let's just, we'll do this real quick and then we'll get to the first item in a second. So we'll, if everybody could...
It's the West Gannett.
Yes, and so we'll let everybody, yeah, let's let everybody move out and then we'll, just it's kind of loud. Let's make sure. So we think after we've, all of these bills, we will be considering 1A, 1B, 3, 12A and B, 12A, 12B, and then 13A and 13B. Is that correct, Ma?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Council Lady Johnson? Yes, ma'am. Before we...
I won't be long. We did find the item and I just want you all to be cognizant of Item 2016S-135001. That was previously on Page 41 of today's 714 MPC review packet regarding the proposed Habitat for Humanity Homes project. I do not want this to be an administrative approval. I would like to have that placed on the agenda and considered. Thank you. Considered to be placed on the agenda. And that's, I'm just making a comment, no discussion at this point. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Chair.
All right. So again, we'll hear Items 1A, 1B, 3, 12A, 12B, 13A, and 13B. And there are more chairs if y'all want to sit down. So we are now in the public hearing part. Go ahead. 1A.
Good afternoon. I'm here to present Item 1A on your agenda. It is Case Number 2016CP 007 001, a request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan. This presentation will be followed by the presentation for Item 1B on the agenda, the accompanying zone change request, 2016SP 004 001. The request is to amend the West Nashville Community Plan to add a special policy to the existing urban neighborhood evolving policy for this area outlined in the black and white hatch here north of Charlotte Avenue in between I-40 and I-440 in West Nashville. The staff recommendation is to approve. The site is located about two miles, two blocks north of Charlotte Avenue, and it's bounded, you can see here, 35th Avenue North, the interstates, and Trevor Street. The current policy is urban neighborhood evolving, and urban neighborhood evolving policy supports a mix of housing at moderate to high densities in neighborhoods that are planned to evolve over time. The amendment area includes some areas of CO policy shown in green, which would not be covered by the special policy. The applicant is requesting a special policy to support building heights of up to seven stories was viewed from the interstates and four stories is viewed from the rest of the neighborhood. The special policy is not a request that's being requested to attain additional density beyond what is supportable under urban neighborhood evolving policy, but rather to enable a unique building design that works with the topography to place the additional height in a location where it can be an iconic feature from other parts of the city. The portion of the special policy area that is visible from the neighborhood is limited to a maximum of four stories. The seven-story height limit for the portion of the site that overlooks the interstates was determined to be appropriate to enable a unique building design in a prominent location that's in proximity to a Nashville NEXT immediate need high-capacity transit corridor, Charlotte Avenue, that is adjacent to a Tier 1 center, which is basically midtown all the way through The design that works with the topography enables a building to achieve the proposed seven stories overlooking the interstates and be level with the tops, rooftops of the shorter buildings in the special policy. That's kind of a product of the changes in elevation. The special policy that's proposed does include three conditions. One is that building form and site design need to be sensitive to areas of steep topography that are intermingled with the more level land. Another is the exceptional urban design adding to the distinctiveness of the character emerging in the neighborhood as it redevelops, which features relatively tall housing types designed to take advantage of the neighborhood's exceptional views. And also that any zone changes to implement this special policy would be to a site plan based zoning district to ensure that the zoning meets the intent of the special policy. And so the staff recommendation is to approve this special policy.
Thank you. Jason?
This is the SP associated with the policy amendment, Sky Nashville. Properties outlined in red, this is to permit a residential development. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to the approval of the associated policy amendment. If the policy amendment's not approved, then staff would recommend disapproval. The existing zoning is two-family residential. The zoning would permit up to 42 units, which would be 34 lots and up to eight duplex lots. This is the proposed SP. Calls for a maximum 141 residential units, includes 114 stacked flats and 27 detached units. The stacked flats are located in the two buildings. Building A has 84 units and Building B has 30 units. There are six detached units along 35th Avenue. There are 11 along Trevor. There's 10 internal that run onto open space as well as face the Building B. Access into the site is from four locations. There are two locations on Trevor and two locations on Delaware. The red dots indicate access points into the parking garage. Plan also provides internal sidewalks throughout the development and new sidewalks on 35th and Trevor. Building height, the reason that we're, that there's a special policy needed for building height? For the special policies needed for Building A. Building A is shown seven stories on the interstate side and four internally. Building B is shown as five stories on the interstate side and three internally. The townhomes are up to three stories in height with two stories along Trevor and 35th and step up to three stories at the back. The fourth level of Building A includes a mezzanine level, which includes several residential units. After further discussion, staff has concluded that this would qualify as a separate floor, making the building height eight stories. A staff condition is at the maximum height, the limit's to seven stories and 85 feet along the interstate and four stories and 65 feet internally. Adjustments to the final will need to be made as necessary. The plan calls for several parking, or parking through surface parking, on-street parking, and structured parking. The next few slides are views of the site. This is an aerial view looking from the west. Next few slides are before and after. This is looking up from Trevor. This is another view looking from the west, east down Trevor. This is a view from the interstate. This is another view from the interstate. The policy is conservation and urban neighborhood evolving. Nashville NEXT indicates that Charlotte Avenue is an immediate need high-capacity transit corridor. The site is in close proximity to a Tier 1 center. Nashville NEXT encourages growth along corridors and within and near centers. The neighborhood is also identified as a transition and infill area. Staff finds that the request is consistent with the neighborhood evolving policy with the special policy. The plan adds additional housing options in an urban area near a major corridor in downtown. The overall design fosters walkability. The detached units are designed to fit within the existing character and the emerging character along 35th and Trevor. Also, in this case, the policy amendment is not necessary to provide more density, but has been requested to take advantage of the prominent location with excellent views of downtown and the surrounding area. The policy currently supports up to five stories with the appropriate design. In determining the appropriate height, staff focused on the height as it would relate to the neighborhood and Sylvan Heights. While the building height will exceed the height currently supported by the policy, the seven-story building as visible from the neighborhood and Sylvan Heights will read as four stories. The additional three stories step into the hill along the interstate side, thus requiring a policy amendment for seven stories. Plan is also consistent with the conservation policy. There are steep slopes on the site. A majority of these slopes are actually along the interstate and outside the footprint of the development. Plan works well with the topography. Building A and B step down the slope. This is the reason why the buildings are taller on the interstate sides. The units along Trevor and Delaware also step down the slope. Also, conservation policy states that while, states that a balance should be struck between protecting sensitive features and the function of design of high priority growth areas as identified in Nashville NEXT, where a decision must be made in one direction or the other, the balance tips toward more supporting function and development pattern of the corridor and center. Plan supports several critical planning goals, supports infill development, creates walkable neighborhoods, provides a range of housing choices, and supports a variety of transportation choices. In reviewing this application, access to the site... choices. In reviewing this application, access to the site, staff understood that access to the site was served by substandard roads. See, this is Thirty-Fifth Avenue looking towards the site. At this location, it necks down to about thirteen feet wide. And this is looking at Thirty-Third Avenue, looking up towards the site. To improve the pedestrian network as well as vehicular access to the site, staff is recommending that Thirty-Third and Thirty-Fifth be improved from the project site to Charlotte Avenue. This would include sidewalks. The traffic impact study also requires eastbound left turn lane along Charlotte into Thirty-Fifth. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions if the policy amendment is approved and a disapproval if the policy amendment is not approved.
Thank you, sir. This item's open for public hearing. The applicant will have ten minutes. You'll have the ability for a two-minute rebuttal. If you don't use two minutes, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan, five sixteen Heather Place. I'm a civil engineer with Dale &amp; Associates. We represent the property owner for items one A and one B. First, I'm going to run through a couple of quick bullet points. Jason, quite frankly, regurgitated a lot of what I had written down to say, but I'll skim through it as we've got a couple more speakers behind me. The first is just the existing state and the existing zoning and conditions of the site. It's an older undeveloped portion of the subdivision. However, the roads are constructed. There's twenty-five platted legal buildable lots, twenty-three of which are duplex eligible. So by right today, there could be forty-eight duplexes constructed on this property without any exterior improvements or new sidewalks, you know, front low garages, that sort of a thing. The second is the policy. I think they both, Cindy and Jason, outlined it well. The policy request has nothing to do with density. It's simply, and nothing to do with height on the interior side of the property. It simply has to do with the height along the interstate. Looking at this property, there's several people that have looked at it. It's a prominent location. It's almost a landmark location. If you're coming, you know, if you're a tourist coming from Memphis, coming to visit Nashville, this is what you're going to pass. And our vision for this is that it looks as a landmark, an icon from the interstate side, however it blends and meshes well and fits right within the community on the interior side. So, and the next point I was going to make is just the plan itself. Just overviewing the plan, you can see the single-family detached homes, they match, if not, improve the streetscape along both sides, setback spacing, the width of them, the height of them, their mass and scale. That was our main goal, is to preserve Trevor and Thirty-Fifth. And behind them would be one building that you would see as three stories and one building you would see as four stories, but working with the topography because it falls very sharply towards the interstate, the heights of those will not overshadow what you see from the interior. The biggest concern that we've heard, and we've had two community meetings, we've had numerous meetings with the planning staff, and numerous meetings with the Public Works Department, the largest item has been traffic, the concern of traffic and substandard roads, not only Thirty-Third and Thirty-Fifth, but just the arrangement of Charlotte Avenue as it currently exists. So through all those meetings, we've decided to not only concur with what Jason said, what's in the staff report, which is improving both Thirty-Third and Thirty-Fifth from our site all the way to Charlotte, widening them to an ST two fifty-one, which specifically means twenty-seven foot of pavement, curbs and gutters, and sidewalks. And these are roads that, in some places, are thirteen feet wide today. And that's both of those. The second thing is the left turn lane on Charlotte. Right now, Charlotte has two eastbound lanes, two westbound lanes, no center turn lane. So if someone's wanting to turn left, it's starting a bottleneck going back up from there. The center turn lane will avoid that. But the third thing that was not in the staff report, but something we had discussed and we're still in agreement with, is the intersection of Thirty-Fifth and Charlotte. Right now, it's a two-lane section. It's not striped appropriately. And so if someone was wanting to turn left from Thirty-Fifth onto Charlotte, and I was behind them wanting to turn right, I would have to wait for them. We're in agreement to construct that to a three-lane section, that separate right-out, left-out, one entry lane. So, you know, we're hopeful that these, and these are very significant off-site improvements. In fact, it's about two thousand linear feet of off-site road improvement and close to four thousand square, or four thousand linear feet of brand-new public sidewalk, all attached to this project. We're hopeful that that is felt as not only a mitigation measure for this project, because we did provide a traffic impact study that did not require one off-site improvement. So these off-site improvements did not come from engineering data. They came through discussions with the neighborhood, discussions with the planning department, and discussions with the Public Works Department. So we hope that you can see our point of view as the staff has, as has Councilman Kendall, that this is a unique opportunity. It's quite a hill up here. In fact, it was nicknamed Howard's Hill for many years. It's a great opportunity for a skyline view of a building and an iconic structure for the forty west corridor. So appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roy Dale, Dale &amp; Associates. How to do this very quickly. I was just going to talk about process. We actually started this project in May of last year. We met with Councilman Kendall on the front end. We met with Planning Commission staff to more or less get a criteria in which we should proceed. Plans were submitted to planning in December of two thousand fifteen, December two thousand fifteen. On December the twelfth, we mailed out our first public notices. In January, we deferred this at the Planning Commission level in order for us to incorporate comments that we received during initial reviews and to also reach out to the community. We actually went door-to-door, which is quite unusual, but we went door-to-door and talked to three hundred different houses, and then we followed that up with a community meeting on March the twenty-second. At that meeting, we again listened to the community. We incorporated suggestions, changes in design, and formally submitted back to the Planning Commission again. On May the tenth, we mailed out our third and fourth public meeting notices. One was for a community meeting held on the twenty-third by the Planning Commission, and one was June the twenty-third, was supposed to be the Planning Commission meeting. In the May community meeting that we had, the Planning Commission actually held, that we did a larger-than-normal radius based upon the fact that it was a land use policy. There was even a contact with the Sylvan Park Association, which is centered about a mile away. And at that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about traffic. As Michael had mentioned, we agreed to things well beyond what the traffic study had required, but at this meeting, we also agreed that we would delay the June twenty-third meeting until today's meeting, which is July the fourteenth, which is more or less our drop-dead date. That would give two months for any other discussion, any other input. I know during this period of time, the adjacent council member, Murphy, has met with the Planning Commission staff. She's expressed a lot of concerns. The staff listened to those concerns, and as a result, came back with some recommendations, which we agreed to. I think her comments were very good, and the result was it actually improved the plan. So I would like to thank her for that involvement. This is pretty much, we've had a number of meetings. I don't think there's any stone that's been left unturned. I don't think there's any question that could be asked that we haven't addressed. We are doing more than what we'd have to normally do, but we feel like that if we're going to replace this type of iconic building in Nashville that the city can be proud of, we should do some additional items, which we've agreed to do. I think the council member is definitely in support. I know he's given you a letter to that effect, and I'll let Tom White speak for a minute.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I'm an attorney with Toon &amp; Kinney White, three fifteen Dedrick Street. Basically, my request today is this matter be approved and certainly not be deferred. And the reason I'll address on the deferral is this. This matter's been at discussion for a significant period of time. You've all received a letter from Councilman Kendall where he's urged your support. We've spoken to him. He has asked us and is supportive of it not to be deferred today. This matter currently comes before the council at the September public hearing. That's important, and it's a contractual matter that I can address. That is, my client, who's the owner of the property, has got a commitment with respect to having the zoning and the financing ready to go on September thirty. And there's no reason why this matter should be deferred. It comes before the council. We've committed that we would have any type of neighborhood meetings either Councilman Kendall or Council Lady Murphy would request. But again, with respect to the contractual commitment, if we could bump it past today as we did the last time, we would do that. But the commitments for financing and development are such that we have to have our zoning over by September thirty. With respect to the issues before this commission today, you've heard the staff, the recommendation of approval. I again have looked at the comments Council Lady Murphy has given to the staff. I think they'll tell you they've addressed a significant number of those incorporated. I think it's made it a better bill, as Roy Dale has said. But we'll commit to any additional neighborhood meetings, but moving forward, it's a legislative matter. It should go to that body. There's no reason why it should be deferred and not approved today. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you. You have a minute and fifteen, well, a minute and twelve seconds. We can get the applicant. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor, please come to the microphone. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? So what we'll do is you'll line up so that, and then you'll have two minutes to speak, and please state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Lewin. I live at thirty-three oh six-
All right, Rob, you're going to have, I'm sorry, Rob, real quick, you'll have five minutes as the association-
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live at thirty-three oh six A Trevor Street, which is on your screen. It's the house right in the middle there. I live directly across from the potential development. We moved in, first night sleeping in that house was March thirteenth, and we found out very immediately that we had a problem on our hands because somebody wanted to put one hundred and forty-one units across the street. We're a very new group. Our community group, Sylvan Summit, just met for the first time at our house on June twenty-first, two days before the previous meeting here. The community that we have found is almost universally against this process, and we would almost, to a person, request that you disapprove completely. In my conversations with those people, every single one of them is pro-development. These are well-educated, smart people that have moved in here. About seventy-five percent of all these people have just moved in. These are brand-new homes. These are thoughtful, college-educated folks. And almost to a person, they say there's no reason not to maintain the R-six current zoning. It makes for forty-eight units on the top of this hill. You can make a whole bunch of money putting forty-eight units on the top of that hill with that view. If the goal is to make money, if the goal for the developers is to make money, we understand. Spent nearly five million dollars buying this property. We get it. That makes sense. Would have loved to have bought it if I was there before then. But to take advantage of this hill, to destroy what's there now, and to put up there one hundred and forty-one units is a really bad idea. Number-one bad idea is this is, I think it's two-point-one cars per, is that right, Jason? Or Cindy? Two-point-one cars per unit? Is that right? Pretty close?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're talking about two-hundred-and-eighty vehicles, and I just have no idea how we're going to get two-hundred-and-eighty vehicles off that hill. They say there's been a traffic study, Schmethic study. We can have as many of those as we want. They're not going to be two-hundred-and-eighty cars coming out in front of their house. They're going to be coming out in front of my house. And there isn't anywhere for them to go. Even if we have the advanced change to Thirty-Third and Thirty-Fifth, it's going to be a disaster. There are plenty of other ways to make tens of millions of dollars on this hill. This is, should not be one of them. There is no need to change the zoning from R-six. We understand that this is a T-four NE neighborhood, but where we live doesn't feel like T-four NE. This specific neighborhood doesn't feel like that at all. It feels much more like we're back in Sylvan Park. So this is residential. This is slow. This is slow-paced. We understand that development is going to happen here. We want development to happen here. We just don't need one hundred and forty-one units and two-hundred-and-eighty cars on four acres at the top of a hill. I don't know if you all have driven here, have been through it, have driven around. I encourage that in my email if you got a chance. Two-hundred-and-eighty, I mean, just, we're processing how many cars between seven and nine AM have to go out on either Thirty-Third or Thirty-Fifth? And then how many Uber vehicles Friday and Saturday night? It's going to be crazy. Lastly, and I have obviously folks that want to talk behind me, we want to talk about the gentrification. We already have half-million-dollar properties on this hill. There, we would, in our conversations with Dale &amp; Associates, we said, how about affordable housing? How about worker housing? How about doing something a little bit more creative than just fully gentrifying the hill? How about something a little bit more interesting? We could build Nashville's most iconic restaurant with a tremendous view. Lots of cities have that kind of a restaurant. We didn't get a chance to be in the dialogue. They have had my phone number, and I was the number-one loudest complainer at the meetings. They've had my phone number since March. I haven't gotten any contact, and there hasn't been any dialogue. They've said what they're going to do. They're going to do this, and they brought lots of firepower to make it happen. But they didn't say, what would you like? They said, this is what we're doing. Do you have any problems with it? Well, yeah, I got a problem. I got a problem. I don't want to do that. And how about if we do something else? How about if we talk about twenty-two-million-dollar houses? You're still clearing more than ten million dollars. It doesn't make any sense. Please vote to disapprove both the amendment to the community plan and the change in zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim May. I live at two thirty-three fifty Fourth Avenue North. I've been lived in West Nashville since seventy-four. Three points. One, over and over again in both CMM and in the West Nashville Community Plan, there's speaking, there's talking about density along the corridors, transitioning into the neighborhood. Basically, this is turning that concept upside down. Two, I think they've already admitted this, that this is actually an eight-story proposal and not seven. Three, ST two fifty-one, which is narrow minor local cross-section, the street that they're asking for, net density is along the street, the street does not exceed nine units per acre, and lots are at least fifty feet wide. This is from the manual, I think I sent everybody. It was attached, an email I sent. So if, one, there's going to be ST two fifty-one requirements, if this is actually an eight-story proposal you've got before you now, and it can only be seven, then I think you should defer it until they can resubmit a plan that we, one, accommodates S-two fifty-one and reduces the height to seven stories. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Hi. My name's Lily Lewin, and I live at thirty-three oh six A Trevor Street. I live right across the street from this. I just moved back to Nashville after twenty-five years. I grew up here. I was in Nashville before Nashville was cool, and I spent over a year looking for a place to live because everybody else decided Nashville was cool and moved back at the same time. I looked at Twelve South. I looked at East Nashville. I looked at Germantown because my studio is in Germantown, and I really wanted to live in Germantown. Well, Germantown now, I'm so thankful that I didn't buy a house in Germantown because it's the most crowded, most mismatched thing I've ever seen. I don't, I couldn't even find the studio the other day because it had changed so much in just a couple of months. So that makes me sad to think that this proposal wants to fix a beautiful place into a place that's going to look, just be a traffic-infested horribleness. I have a great view, not of the city, of a view of the sunset, and I'd like to keep my view of the sunset. I also have a view of trees. One of my biggest problems with this, and I said it in the letter that I sent you, was that they're going to kill all the big trees that are up there, which means to me that there's going to be a lot of runoff. There's all, right now, the slope in front of my house is like this. When it rains, like it rained today, it's like a torrential river that goes down the middle of the street. We met with our neighbors. We've knocked on doors. We've handed out cookies. We've tried to get a taste of what is the neighborhood's like because we're the new people. We're the people who moved in and built the stupid house on the hill, you know, that they're mad at, the people who live down the road. I want to meet my neighbors and know about the history of this place. I don't want to just be the newbie on the hill. I would like to be their friend. And I've met with a woman who has lived there for fifty years, who didn't know anything about this project, and she wasn't able to be here today. But I'd like to stand up for the little people who still live in this neighborhood, who may have to pay higher taxes because of what's getting ready to happen on the hill. Thanks for your service and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, Mr. Chairman and the commission. My name is Maisha Grigsby, and I live at thirty-three twenty-two Trevor Street, right on the corner of Thirty-Fifth and Trevor, so right across from where this development would be. And I'll try to be quick. I just want to touch on a couple of issues. First, I would like to ask that you disapprove both of these requests to rezone these properties. Basically, one, I would like to ask you, would you want this type of development in the middle of your neighborhood, right across from your home? I'm just really concerned about Nashville as a whole on a larger scale and- I'm just really concerned about Nashville as a whole on a larger scale and the rapid development that we see all over our city. I'm a native Nashvillian, I've moved away just a little bit, but I came back, and I'm happy to see the way that our city's growing. I like the development, but I do think that we have to strike a balance. And I'm scared that with how quickly we're just building things for financial gain, that we're losing what's special about Nashville. And if you go out into the community, most people would agree with me, if you're talking to people that have been here a while, and new people, they come here for a reason, and they like the small-town vibe with the urban feel, and I think that we're, we're growing too fast. Second, more specifically to this, this project will increase the density of our neighborhood greatly, and it's gonna provide a lot of congestion to our area, which we're not used to. This is very residential, and I think that it's gonna be a real headache for the people who own homes like myself in this community and that have been there, new and, and have been there a while. And so I think something more reasonable, like the, the plots that are there now for 48 some-odd units, I think that would make more sense than 140. I think that's just too much, and it's disrespectful to the people that live there currently. Third, traffic. Sorry.
Sorry.
Is that something I need to stop? No?
That means that you gotta stop.
Okay. Sorry.
The big red button.
Okay.
We're sorry. Everybody gets two minutes, but-
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure the council is, she, she has unlimited amount of time, and she can probably cover. Tell her your third point.
I'm Shirley Stevens. I live at 3809 Lookout Drive. I'm different from the others in that I live across Charlotte. I don't live on Howard's Hill. And I'm here to talk about the traffic congestion that we have already experienced as a result of other developments that didn't take into consideration the infrastructure. I mean, there's been a few casual references to Charlotte Avenue, but if you've driven Charlotte Avenue, you know it was not built for the type of density that is being proposed by any of these developments. Just to mention a few that are within a, say, 14-block area, less than a mile, you've got Hill Center Development, 260 apartments, 14 single-family homes, 32 townhomes, you got West, 46 apartments, 171 units, you got Richland Station, 40 single-family homes, and you got Sylvan Summit with this proposed 142. That small area of Charlotte is being so congested with all of these new developments. If you've driven down that street, just 2:00 in the afternoon, even before the rush hour, it is bumper to bumper. You can barely get down the street, you look up, and as far as the eye can see, cars, all the way up to White Bridge Road from, say, 40th and Charlotte. You put another 141 up there, what do you think it'll look like then? We are too congested. Developers have beautiful ideas which might fit someplace else, but to have all of this development in one area without developing the infrastructure, like six lanes on Charlotte Avenue would be helpful, you know? I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time, attention, and service to our city. I appreciate it. I'm gonna just skim over the letter that I submitted, just sort of do the-
You need to tell us your name and address.
I apologize, of course. I'm Annette Rebecca, I'm the President and Executive Director for the Richland Creek Waterset Alliance. I also happen to live at 32050 Fourth Avenue North, next to Richland Station, and since I'm, she mentioned that, I'll, I'll just say, that was 3.12 acres, and they had to, they had to unload equipment and building supplies in the road because there was no room for staging. So I can't imagine putting more than that on almost the same amount of land. Anyway, I'm writing again on behalf of the Richland Creek Waterset in opposition to this project. And both the plan amendment and the specific plan. I attended the May 23rd meeting on its first introduction, it was my first introduction to this plan. No site was, site plan was presented, and I also understood there would be another meeting afterwards on June 23rd. There was no subsequent meeting. On behalf of Richland Creek, at this meeting, I asked the applicant where the stormwater would drain from these properties and share concerns about the protection of the existing steep slopes, mature trees, and impacts from blasting. The applicant responded that water drains in many directions and no trees, trees exist. Below in your packet is showing that where the stream is, a tributary to Richland Creek that runs all along I-440 and I-40, where all this water drains and, and empties into Richland Creek at I, where I-40 crosses, where I-40 crosses, I'm having, Richland Creek in Nation's area. So they're impacted by this increase in, in stormwater. They were very, as you well know, impacted by the 2010 flood. So more stormwater from a top hill, fast-moving pollution, erosion, especially if all the trees are gone. It's under conservation. I know development trumps, I had to use that word, conservation, but I just, that's just not right. It's just wish we didn't have the policy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Robert Barney. I am a resident, newly resident to the neighborhood. I live at 412B 33rd Avenue. And just for record, I have a civil engineering degree, so very familiar with the development and work for a construction company. So I am actually in favor of development of the property, but I'm in opposition to the actual zoning to triple the density. I won't, I won't touch on it too much, but traffic is obviously the big concern. Widening the road definitely needs to happen because the road can't support the development. The issue I have with that is the widening of the road is gonna basically take up my whole front yard, I'm gonna walk up my front door to a street. That would be one of my concerns. Obviously, traffic going up and down the hill, night and day, is the other concern. One of the other concerns is during the winter, traffic going up and down the hill, is it just gonna slip and slide up and down the hill? What's in place to, you know, help with the, the winter weather conditions there? The second item of concern is blasting for the foundations for a, a seven, eight-story building, which the foundations will have to be significant to carry that. Third, third concern is the loss of the trees. There's a lot of noise traffic with the interstate right there, so losing the trees is gonna increase the noise. Our sound wall is gonna be installed along the interstate. And then my last item is community access to all the amenities of the property. Community access, I think, will be restricted. I think only Sky Nashville residents will have access to the many amenities. As spoken before, one of the best restaurants in the city could be located in this spot, but currently that's not being proposed. So that's all I have to, to offer. Thank you, everyone, for listening.
Thank you. Come on up.
Yep. I was gonna request that the slides be backed up to have the overview. Is that possible before my time starts?
Yeah.
The broader out from that, please. There we go. All right. I'm Ted Pins. I am a 15-year realtor in Nashville. I bought my first house in Sylvan Heights in Normandy in 2002.
We need your address, sir. Sorry.
3300 Nevada. I live on the opposing hill of Charlotte. I named it the community Sylvan Summit. I own the domain. I'm proud of that. I'm excited to see what happens. As a realtor and a person that's sold homes on Felicia, 35th, 33rd, Trevor, I'm very familiar and in favor of development. This isn't one of them, based on the density and how it impacts the issues of this community. What I think's important to understand here, I leave my home every day on Nevada. I come down 33rd, I take a left, excuse me, I come down Nevada, take a left on 33rd, and then when you try to make left onto Charlotte, which is this wide gap here, coming up, once you go under 440, it is almost impossible because the slope, and I'm not familiar with the traffic study that's been done, I'd be happy to review that, but coming up Charlotte after you go under 440, you're coming up a slope and you can't see what's coming over that hill. So I think it would necessitate a traffic light to be placed there for the traffic to even go to the top of this hill. Not to mention, there's really only two key access points. I'm not sure where we see four, because 440 and 40 intersect at the top of that hill. That's the big white space you see. Therefore, the gray spaces that you see there, the two access points are really 33rd and 35th. They're small streets, they've just been developed, I've sold many of the homes on them, and we've acted under existing zoning to put two-on-ones as they were previously zoned. No SPs, no hearings, we just did what was within the zoning that was made for that space, and I think a lot of consideration went into the fact based on the access of this. It's like the Cool Springs Mall being right next to 65. Let's look at the traffic there. This is a similar situation. I don't encourage a restaurant on top of this hill, although it sounds exciting and cutesy. I think it's the wrong place for commercial or this type of density. So that's my issue. 48 units is a duplex, lovely. It's gonna help the area. I do think they can plan for stormwater, but I don't think this density is appropriate for that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel lady? Well, counsel lady, do you wanna go last? You want, you want me to check? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay.
Can we actually back up to the front?
So your purse might have touched the button.
Oh, no.
There's a button right there. Now try it.
Am I on?
Now talk.
Somebody wanna help me? I'm on now?
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all for letting me speak. Let me, I'm sorry, maybe forward, maybe backwards, I'm sorry. This one, that one's, that one's good for, for right now. Thank you. Thank y'all for letting me speak. As you're aware, this is not my district. This area is completely landlocked by my district, and so I, I feel like it is, it's part of my district, it's part of our area, it's part of our neighborhood. It's on the Charlotte corridor, which I represent, just a few blocks down from here, is my district. So it's, I approached Councilman Kendall a number of months ago at the, at the council meeting and said, there's a development going on in that little area, it's completely landlocked by my district, can I help you with it? Can, can we be involved and work together on this? And he agreed. And I would like to kind of touch on, before I get too much further, is that I spoke to him on my way here tonight, and I said, Councilman Kendall, I heard that there's a letter sent to the Planning Commission saying that you approved this project, and that you hadn't heard of any opposition, and, and we've met with some neighbors, and so I just wanted to check with you on, on that letter. And he said that the letter was either sent before he had met with the neighbors, or that it was maybe not written correctly when he left the message for one of our assistants at the council office. He, he made it clear to me that because the developers have told us that they are on a contractual deadline, that it needs to go through tonight, but that he is on, he is not on board with the development as it is presented tonight. As he agrees with me, and as Mr. White told me yesterday on the phone, there's still a whole lot of work to be done on this project. And so that's one of the reasons I'm gonna ask you to defer or decline tonight, because there's still so much work to be done. You've heard that there have been a few community meetings. I did not know of them. I was not made aware of them. Around March 2nd, I spoke to Mr. Dale at the planning, at the council office, and he said that there was going to be a meeting, and I said, please let me know, I'd like my neighborhood associations, which is Sylvan Heights across Charlotte, to be notified. He sent me an email on March 2nd saying, not giving me the details, and that he would let me know when there was a meeting that affected my district and included members from my district. I, I made a mistake. As some of y'all know, I, I work in advocacy, and I'm a lobbyist at the state legislature, and, and I took Roy at his word that he would let me know when the next meeting was. I was not notified until well after the meetings were over. And so I will check my, check my dates. On June 26th and 27th, I emailed the developers, Roy, and I'm sure he shared with the rest, and I said, can we please have a community meeting? My neighborhood association needs to be involved. My district is the one that's gonna be impacted greatly from this development. He said, no, there's not enough time. Now, that was the 26th of June. He didn't even offer to meet with me one-on-one and sit down and go over the project. When I finally was able to get a copy of the traffic study, there's a different number of units in the traffic study from the site plan that was in development tracker. I'm a new council member. I wrote him back. I called the staff, too, I couldn't get a hold of them at that time, so I just wrote him an email, and I said, freshman council member question. There's a different unit count on the, the development plan than on your traffic study? Like, which is right? What's going on there? And to this day, he has not written me back an email that says the unit count. He's written me back emails saying that things are still fluid, and that I would know more when the staff recommendation came out last Friday. That really doesn't give me or my constituents time to digest this project and see what our position and opinion should be on this, on this development. If you look, I mean, that's a huge change in the landscape of, of this hill, of this iconic hill, that would be no longer a hill, I mean, it's just one large development. I think transparency has seriously been lacking here. It would've been easy to reach out to me. It's my understanding that the planning staff did try to contact the Sylvan Heights Neighborhood Association via their website. There's a problem there, they were not able, they did not get that communication, they've transferred leadership recently, there have been some, you know, you know, gaps in communication. But again, had I been simply emailed or called, I could've put them in communication with, with the neighborhood associations. There were a lot of chance, there was a lot of chances for me to have input, for the community to have input, for people who just moved here to have input, and they were simply ignored and not taken. And, and again, I think that is really, really important here, beyond the fact that I take a lot of issues with, with the development plan. Couple things I'd like to point out is, this is the first I've heard that it won't be allowed to have the eighth floor, which I think is good. I'm still opposed to, to the extra floors unless I saw more information about it. On the site plan I was given, level five wasn't even labeled, you kinda had to infer that there were five floors there. I mean, there's just so many gaps and, and just balls dropped here that I'm just, I'm really shocked that we've kinda gotten to this point. And I think that any, I mean, the, the Planning Commission is where you work out a lot of these planning details, right? Y'all are, y'all are the ones who study the policy and work with this day in, day out. You have staff who can help you with this. It's not to be worked out at the council. We aren't the ones who need to be working out these inner details of the plan and how they're applied. We've gotta do that here tonight, and if they're not worked out here, you know, amendments might be appropriate, but not significant amendments the way they're leading us to believe we'd be able to do. And I've learned from my mistake this March. I'm not gonna let that happen again, knock on wood. So I guess, you know, my neighbors tonight have touched on a lot of things, I'll just hit on a few more. It's really steep there. When I drove the, when I drove the site, my car has rollover device in it, it came on a few times, I was a little worried, it was a little too steep for me to drive. I hear that a lot of times when it snows and it's icy, that residents park at the bottom of the hill and walk up. Can we imagine if all of these, those, you know, seven stories of, of residents are parking at the bottom of these, these streets that are only 13 feet across right now? I have no information about the blasting, but that scares me. Blasting that close to the interstate, where TDOT has already admitted that 440 can't really be patched much, that we just need to start from scratch, that's a little scary to me. That worries me, and I think it should worry all of us, actually. I won't go into too much, I think that we've really hit on the plan a lot. I, I mean, I would be probably okay with increasing some of the density on this hill, but not to this degree, and not with this lack of transparency. So I ask that you disapprove this tonight, or at least defer it, and allow my constituents to have a say in something that's going to dramatically affect their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel lady. And the applicant will have one minute and 12 seconds.
Not possible. I don't wanna stand here and defend myself.
All right, we'll have a minute and 12 seconds, but-
Okay.
It will show-
I should have a little personal privilege here, I think, quite honestly. I'm not gonna stand here and defend myself. I've worked for this commission for 40 years, and if you don't understand my integrity by now, all is lost. I've reached out to the council member, she contacted me about a meeting on July 19th. That's too late, doesn't work. I have numerous emails that have not been returned, but you know, I don't wanna get into that. I wanna talk about the merits of the proposal. If this property was developed as it is on today, it'd be one lot at a time, just like what's happening out there today. It would do nothing to solve any of the infrastructure that's going on today. There are roads out here that are 13 feet wide, 13 feet wide. No wonder they have traffic problems. This will correct this. This redevelopment is gonna cause two main streets to be built to sidewalks, curbing gutters on both sides. Trevor Street will be built with sidewalks, curbing gutters on both sides. The building massing of the homes on Trevor Street matched the building massing of the homes that are being built around it. These are not cottages that have been there for years and years. This whole hillside is redeveloping. This is an enhancement to this neighborhood, this is where the density needs to go, this This is why Planning Commission staff is making a recommendation of approval. As far as storm drainage is concerned, you know we have to solve storm drainage problems. The building more or less is seven stories because we're extending the building straight down to preserve the trees along the interstate. I don't know what happened there. Went?
No, we, we started to.
Okay.
Our technology's a little backwards. So 10 more seconds, finish up, please.
Well, let me catch my breath.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for interrupting.
Well, a councilman wrote a letter of recommendation. He's not here to defend himself. I think you have to accept the fact that he says he has support. Planning Commission staff has recommended approval and therefore I would ask that you approve this project today. Thank you.
Thank you. We declare the public hearing closed. How about we start over here with Commissioner Farr.
Okay. It's a very interesting, exciting project. I will say I drove up there today and I remembered a time driving up there about 10 years ago when there was actually, it was a pretty scary neighborhood. So to see how much it's changed in 10 years was pretty amazing. But I also immediately thought, how on earth are you going to fit 140 new units in this area? And how can you even widen the roads? I guess, so I guess one question is just, is it even feasible to widen the roads to the extent the applicant has stated that they will? And I noticed in one of our conditions that it make, it says that that's the intent, but due to topography constraints, modifications may be approved. So we're stating that we are going to have this kind of road, but we're not 100% sure we're going to have this road?
We did have lots of discussions about that fact. There's plenty of right-of-way, but the property drops down on one side and goes up on the other side. So it will be challenging, but they engineer anything these days. But we did build some flexibility in there because until you get out and actually engineer it, the minimum requirements we will require is that there has to be a sidewalk on both streets that connect down to Charlotte Avenue. And that the widths of the lanes will have to be 23 on each side. So, and any modifications to that would have to actually come back to the commission. It's not something at a staff level we could do, but it would come to the commission for your consideration.
And then what about Delaware? This is probably for the applicant. Delaware dead ends from what I can tell right now. Is that going to be, that would become improved as a result of the project?
Delaware is basically going to be a service lane.
But that's where they're going to enter and exit, one of the places to enter and exit off of the...
Correct.
Okay, so that's down, I mean, that's a, okay. Can we talk a little bit about the stormwater issues? And, I mean, I started thinking about 440 and the rocks coming off on 440, which gave me a flat tire. So I'm wondering why this might not, and the potential for blasting wouldn't do the same in terms of dislodging some of the rock wall around there.
Hello, everybody. Steve, issue with Metro Water Services. It's been a while since I've seen you guys. We don't really handle blasting in the stormwater department. That would be the state fire marshal. But I've, I've listened to the concerns of the neighbors. It's a, it's a pretty grassed area and with the regulations that we have today, they'll have to, they have to meet today's criteria for, for stormwater. So we wouldn't really look at the blasting, but we would definitely look at the runoff.
And what, so what about the runoff coming down the hill or onto the freeway?
Well, they'll have to, they'll have to treat it with the new requirements that we have. We have a LID manual out now that actually deals more with infiltration than it does with just treating and letting it go. So we'll hold them to, to as firm as we can on our, on our manual.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask one other question and then let others, but what about trees? Are the trees going to, will some of the trees up in that area along the hillside be preserved? What's the intent?
You're directing that?
Yes, I'm directing that at you. Sorry.
You can probably look at the rendering of the site from the perimeter, you know, from the interstate side. Because the wall of the building does extend straight down, you're not trying to grade it up. So you're, you're more or less extended down that where you save all that vegetation. There's a rendering that the architect had put together that would probably more or less reflect of what you would see. I think, there you go. So all that vegetation is intended to remain.
Okay. Okay. You know, I definitely recognize the concerns of the neighbors. And I do recognize that the, the potential for inconsistency with our plan and that it does feel to me like density should be more or less located adjacent, right, on Charlotte versus four blocks up. I have some concern at some point that we need to do a cumulative traffic study on Charlotte to take into account all of the projects that are going in from White Bridge on up. I mean, each project, we keep hearing that it, that it doesn't require additional improvements, but all of them together are going to require something. I remember this area when it was a very low-income area. I was, as I said, pretty shocked to see the quality, you know, the homes that are in there now, thinking ahead to what's coming next week and everything that we're doing around affordability right now. This is an area that really should have affordable units in it. And, you know, I feel like if this came in front of us in six months and 20% were set aside as affordable units, I might possibly look at this differently. But right now, I just, I think there's enough issues with it from, from the policy side and, and some of the other concerns that have been raised on traffic and how we're concentrating the density combined with the fact that I would like to see some more affordable housing in this development that, that make it hard for me to support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Clifton?
Well, the vice chairperson has been much more detailed in thinking about this than I have been, as you might, as some of you would guess. But I, I was struck by a couple of thoughts as I heard from both sides. One is clearly there are aspects of this area that would be improved by any sort of planned improvement of streets and widening of streets and some of the amenities that have been suggested. So, so it's not like everything about this is, is terrible by any means. And I can understand why the staff approved it, but it's been my impression for a long time, I don't know if I've ever said it or not, but when the staff approves something, it's probably not the only thing that they would approve had it come before them, for the area. I mean, I'm sure this is not news to anyone, but there are a lot of approvable projects around town that never get proposed. And there's probably one right out here that could be approved as well as this one that would be more in keeping with what some of the concerns have been today. I am well aware that Charlotte, however crowded it is today, is a bright hope for the future in terms of going, getting into downtown, in terms of its possibilities, when and if we move forward on transit and things like that. But because of the concerns that have been raised and particularly some of the, the concerns that Jessica has brought forward, I'm, I'm not for it today. I, I could support a motion to defer or to disapprove. It needs a little bit more, a lot more work perhaps, but I'm anxious to hear what everyone else has to say. Thank you.
Counsel lady?
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Farr said many of the things that were on my mind, so good, good job on that one, especially on the, on the housing affordability. I keep being told if you'll give me density, I can give you affordable housing and, and you triple density and you still don't have any. So that, that, that's a concern. I, I, Mr. Miss, thank you. Mr. Miss Chu, if I could get you back up here.
Hold on one second, counsel lady.
Yes.
So just, we always try to be cordial and so no outbursts from the crowd or we'll have to stop the meeting. And then, so everybody had a say, so now, counsel lady, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just more stormwater question. In, I don't know if it's 1A or 1B, it says stormwater recommendation approved. What did you all approve?
We would have, okay, so we would approve a preliminary concept plan to the stormwater.
Uh huh.
So we wouldn't approve construction drawings, that wouldn't come until afterward. So right now, right now, everything we're doing is conceptual.
And so what was, what was conceived? I mean, what, what did they say about stormwater? Are they doing cisterns or swales or, I mean, that's a lot of water to take care of. And I would think it would take some pretty significant structures or, or something that even at a conceptual stage. Has that been presented to you yet?
Yes, ma'am, they've submitted it to our staff. I was an actual reviewer on it, but they have submitted plans to us. When they submit through preliminary, it does funnel through our system. And we will look at it as far as what's out there today and we'll compare it to what's in the future. And the more, the more impervious area they have today, the easier it is for them to, to meet our requirements in the future.
Right.
For this, they don't have that much impervious today. So, so they'll have to do more in the future.
Right. I would, I would be interested to know what that, what that is. Perhaps, can I ask the, the applicant that question or is that too? May I ask the, the stormwater question?
Yes. It's shown on sheet C 4.0 with the plans. There are, the drives are to be pervious payment and there are six different rain gardens located throughout the development.
And do the rain gardens have adequate capacity to take care of all the roof area that you're adding?
Yes, ma'am. There's a, there's a short summary of the calculations at the lower left-hand corner.
Okay.
They haven't been designed specifically, but conceptually running the rough numbers, yes, that would have enough volume.
And where, where is there space to put rain gardens?
They're shown, again, on C 4.0. There are the heavy hatched areas. There's three in the courtyard, two at the courtyard at the, kind of the roundabout main entrance, and one on the northeast corner of the main building.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you all have the full set.
I'm not sure we do. That would be, that would be useful information. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's important. Secondly, I'm not sure who I direct this one to. This seems like a large enough project that the, the metro tree ordinance would figure in. Does that, is there any information with regard to that at this point?
They will have to meet the tree replacement requirements of the zoning code, so they're not asking for any exceptions to the current tree requirements of the code.
Okay, that's helpful to know as well. And then, and then finally, I appreciate the work that the staff has put into this. It, it feels to me that all of the reasons to allow extra height have to do with proximity to corridors. And I would, I would echo what Councilmember Farr said, is that to me, proximity to the corridor means that you're on it or, or, you know, within a block perhaps. And this, this to me feel, even though it looks over the interstate, you can't, you can't drive to the interstate from here. To me, it's the neighborhood that you transition to, not the, not the big stuff that's next to the, the corridor. So I have a hard time accepting all the, all the good reasons to do this in a neighborhood evolving area, adjacent to a corridor, to me would make great sense right there on Charlotte. This seems to me like the backside of it. So those things are all pretty big concerns for me.
Thank you, counsel lady. Commissioner Tibbs?
Well, echoing everybody else, Vice Chair Farr really hit everything really good. I'm not as, we could just all just record yours over and over. And I'm not as concerned about the stormwater because we have such a, a good stormwater staff that I, it is going to be taken care of. But, and I too have been driven this a lot lately. And so this was a little shocking almost to see how much would be planned to be up there. I really feel like the present zoning, well, first of all, I am, I, I think development, continued development is, is really, really good. And I do like the fact that the applicant is looking to improve the roads going up there because it is, gets tight. But I, I do feel like this is too much for it. And I think it's Sylvan Heights on the other side that's very similar, not as dense, but um, and, and, but it's, you know, it really still keeps a real good neighborhood, but yet has that good overlook. And I feel like the way this is planned, you, you kind of take away that whole neighborhood, part of it with the, you know, the tall, you know, the extra height structures right there. So I, I liked, I liked most things about it except that I, I don't, I feel like the present zoning developed would be awesome for that area. And I, I don't, I, I do recognize the traffic would be another issue, but as we all know, it's just a big issue we've got to address throughout Nashville. But anyway, I, I, pretty much she summed everything up, but I feel like the present zoning works well.
Commissioner, you.
Well, I'm not going to talk just for the sake of talking, except I, I do want to make one point, I mean, just on the, around infrastructure and our continued conversations about infrastructure. The council member that spoke earlier, who wasn't his district, but he lived across the street from a new development and it's in his backyard, so all of a sudden now, not to say it's all of a sudden, but it's interesting when a council member lives next to something that's about to be developed, it becomes a bigger issue. And saying specifically, I think the quote was, "We can't continue to, we have to consider impacts on infrastructure with new developments and balanced approach to growth." And I think that's what we've been doing here. And I think we've worked really hard to do that. And then Council Lady Murphy mentioned it's not their job at council to be doing this, the details of this. This is the Planning Commission and the planning staff and the planning department's job. And that's what we're trying to do here. So I will just echo all the comments that have been said. I agree with every commissioner who's spoken already. It is not the job, as I was, of one development to handle the traffic issues, but someone has to handle the traffic issues. And we can't keep approving projects and special policies and SPs and exceptions just because at that time, like Stuart, like Commissioner Clifton said, you know, it looks like a okay development. I think, I, I side with you that the current zoning is appropriate. I don't see a need for any, you know, extra density. And I'm disturbed by the fact that one of the reasons, and I appreciate the staff bringing it up, is that the, the way that it's been developed around this area, the T4NE policy, you know, it calls for improvements in access and connectivity. And then because if you're developing these one at a time, you're not getting that. So we're not requiring that. And that's something we need to address. I mean, we shouldn't have to have a huge development and approve something with maximum density just to require sidewalks. So that's, that's something else. So we will continue to work on this, but sidewalks are a necessity in this city. And, you know, expanded roads are going to be a necessity until everybody starts to walk and, and bike. Bike lanes are a necessity. I saw some mention of that as well. So I am, I'm going to listen to the rest of them speak, but that's what I wanted to make sure was.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes?
Boy, I hate to be in the minority and I hate to disagree with my esteemed commissioners. If you would go to the road improvement plan, Jason, showing the, the blue... that one. So can you help me with the distance from Trevor Street down 33rd to Charlotte Avenue? Just a ballpark walking distance.
From Delaware to Charlotte?
No, from Trevor down 33rd to Charlotte. So, you know, I've got a son who's 24, who walks about that same distance to get to a bus. If you look at the shallow depths of the lots along Charlotte, you're not going to get the density there. This is the closest large tract of land to get the density for people to potentially walk down to Charlotte and hop on the bus and not get in their car and sit on their phones and study. And I think this is the appropriate place to have density. So I, I disagree with, with all of you all and would support staff's recommendation on this. I think this is an appropriate place for density. I think Roy Hill has the reputation to handle storm runoff. They're going to do pre-blast surveys, which you have to do in most of all of Nashville because of the subsurface bedrock conditions. So I think this is a very appropriate place for this, this amount of density.
I think we have to remember that we are trying to get density in close to town. This is so close to major hospitals, to HCA. I understand the traffic, 281 cars coming out. But I'm like Jeff, I think a lot of them are going to walk. There's bus routes along Charlotte. I think the people that are moving in here are the generation that will, will ride the There's probably a lot of work yet to be done. I would, for the sake of not having a negative vote tonight, then I'm going to make a motion to defer and give a chance for the all sides to get back together and see if there is some solution to it. But it is so close to the downtown, so close to the buses, so close to the hospitals that I think it just needs to be looked at a little bit, a little bit more. And so for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to defer.
Mr. Chairman, is that a one-meeting deferral or...?
I'm going to leave that up to the council lady as to what she thinks and to the applicant for them to maybe say it's... I don't know whether one meeting is enough or not to work out the differences, maybe two meetings, but...
Chairman, I'd like to ask, in consideration of what's being considered here, that we bumped to the second meeting in August. As I said to you, the current financing and development plan is not going to work. That seems clear from the dialogue today. That's got to be redone. If we go to the second meeting in August, that gives us time. We've agreed to additional meetings. We've had... I've always had a very good relationship with the council lady. It never will change. We'll continue to meet. There's been some miscommunication, but I want to make it as clear as I can that the letter from Councilman Kendall, so you understand why this ought to be deferred, was dated two days ago. I spoke to Councilman Kendall. I've known him for 40 years. His letter was, "I've not received any opposition to these proposals." I mean, it's a total dichotomy here between what we're hearing from different council members. They've got contiguous districts. They're both good, and we want to work with them together. I'm respectfully asking that you defer two meetings to the second meeting in August. We'll commit to you with Council Lady Murphy.
Council Lady, is that okay with you? Here, come up here. That way we'll get you recorded properly.
Sure. I mean, it is... I think I should feel a little bit better that I am getting the commitment that they will communicate with me, notify with me, and work with my neighborhood associations because one good thing out of this project is that we do have a new neighborhood association forming. So we now have two neighborhood association leaderships to get involved on this. So what would be the second meeting? What date would that be?
Oh, we'll look.
August 25th.
August 25th, you were right.
Okay.
Good work.
You know, I hope that will give us enough time. It's a big project. There's a lot to be discussed, and hopefully that will be enough time to work some of these things out if the developers commit to listen to the neighbors.
Thank you, Council Lady.
Thank you.
So you've heard the motion, the deferral for the second?
To the second meeting of August.
Which would be August 25th?
Second.
For both items, one A and one B?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Ayes have it. Item is deferred, second meeting. Real quick, I haven't even talked to anybody about this, and I apologize, but it came... It's coming to my attention, and I want to make sure, and there's been a lot of good discussion about infrastructure and that sort of thing. And so before we adjourn tonight, maybe we consider doing an infrastructure workshop because I think that it's important to know that, especially to the public, and I know many of you, we have some new commissioners on what we do, what the department does, what other agencies do. It's also, it's more than just Metro. It's also the state. It's also the federal government with our interstates. And so I think it might be important... So y'all think about that, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll figure out if we want to do some type of kind of in-depth workshop on infrastructure because I think that it's important, and we need to talk about that. Because the... I know the mayor's office is working on some items, and so we need to kind of get in the council, and we need to get everybody together, and I think that would be within our purview. So think about that. And let's see, we've been here two hours. Do y'all want to take a break, or you want to hear one more and then take a break? What do y'all? All right, we'll hear one more. All right, there's a councilman. All right, we'll do one more. Go ahead. Let her rip.
Thank you. Item number three is the Williams Mill SP proposal. The request is to permit a residential development for up to 125 units. The property is highlighted in red. This is located west of Nolansville Pike and south of Holt Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Current zoning is AR2A. The policy is conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood-evolving. The policy is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improve pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, and moderate density development patterns with moderate setbacks spacing between buildings. Before you is the proposed SP for the up to 125 detached and attached units. These units will be phased in three phases. Highlighted in red is a portion of Phase 3 that will include the detached residential units. This will provide a transition to the maintenance policy to just west of the site. Other units will either orient to the street, open space, or the amenity area. There's two access points into the development, one along Holt Road along the north side and one along Nolansville Pike on the west side. This plan also include... Is also consistent with a major and collector's street plan for sidewalks along Holt Road and Nolansville Pike with eight-foot sidewalks and a six-foot planting strip. There will also be internal sidewalk connections throughout the site. In the staff report, it identifies the traffic impact study requirements and recommendations. As put up here, there'll be a, sorry, westbound and eastbound lane on Holt Road into the development. One item I'd like to point out right now, the planning commissioners do have a memo that identifies one additional recommendation with the TIS, and that is for the one entering lane... I'm sorry, the construction of a northbound left-turn lane on Nolansville Road. So that's in the memo you have before you tonight. These are some proposed elevations of the attached units. Here's the detached units, and then the proposed amenity center. This does meet one critical planning goal, and the proposed development is designed in such a way to orient lots to both Holt Road, Nolansville Pike, amenity center, and open space. All lots are proposed to feature rear-loaded garages, creating an attractive and pedestrian-friendly streetscape. The proposed development does meet the neighborhood-evolving policy and includes a mixture of housing types and provides appropriate transition to the maintenance policy to the west of the site. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, including the additional condition provided in the memo today.
Thank you. The applicant, we're open now. This item is open for public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes, and you could... If you save two minutes, you have two minutes for rebuttal. Go ahead.
I'll try to save at least two. My name is Kevin Estes. I'm with Land Solutions, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. Did not have any prepared statements. Was hoping to stay in consent. I have to send Councilman Fabian a thank you card. I... We're going to start with the community involvement because I always think it's the most important. We've met twice with the community. Both times, Councilman Swope was at those meetings, and at one time, Councilman Bedney was at that meeting. Both meetings were very well attended. Out of the first meeting came several requests. The first and foremost was to restrict it in age to 55-plus since this was being proposed as a... As I get closer to that age, I'm going to say an active adult community. We have agreed to that and made that part of the stipulation. The other request was, you know, to reduce density. We have kept this thing under, I believe it's about 3.2 units an acre. We are met with TDOT and the road improvements to make sure that we're going to tie in with that. We are going to place the sidewalks here. And so along Holt Road, there's going to be vast improvement along that road between us and TDOT. We're improving a large stretch of it, and then TDOT's turned it to five lanes, no, six lanes out at a signalized intersection with Nolansville. This project is... Should be going during construction of TDOT. I imagine they'll get started a little bit after us, and we will probably be providing quite a bit of material removal for TDOT on this. I rarely sit here and ask for votes in community meetings. After 22 years, I tried to dodge that bullet, but we did ask for a vote, and there was a significant vote of approval in the community by... And Councilman has the exact vote, so I'm not going to quote it, but I believe it was close to a four-to-one vote for approval. Once again, we were fortunate that someone came in several years ago and tried to put 400 apartments here, and by all means, this is 125 units, can be aged restricted to 55-plus. All yards are maintained. Everything is maintained without, with the exception of the internal of the unit, and they all sold fee simple. So with that, I'm going to just kind of be short and sweet. We would ask for your approval, and once again, I come up here, and I'm not going to speak for the councilman, but I come up here with what I feel like is strong community support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone and state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes.
Could you put the third or the second slide up, please? There you go. Okay, this is my second time this year to speak to the council. I live directly across the street from where this is proposed. My name is Rosemarie Beaster, 456 Holt Road. I'd ask that you not approve this. I agree with Councilman Bedney. Right now, they're blasting on Bluff Road. I have burning ashes all over my house and my cars. I feel the blasting. I'm concerned about my neighbor across the street. They're building all around him. They have not even contacted him concerning the build or, you know, talked to him about even buying his property. I realize that they do not have to because they can build behind him. I'm concerned about the traffic, and I live... I go straight down Nolansville Road, 45 minutes to go 11 miles to the fairgrounds near where I work. I cut through subdivisions. I'll be the first one to tell you because I can't get anywhere. I go the other direction. I can't get off of my street. There are mornings I pull out of my drive, stop traffic coming up Holt Road so I can make a left. Then if there's one hiccup, they're lined up past my house. I can't get out of my drive. I'm concerned about the stormwater. There's a big culvert, and I've talked to Steve. They're proposing to put their drive, it looks like, across that culvert. My front yard's washing away. The water comes from behind me, goes across the street. I'm wondering, when is enough enough for building? And I appreciate the fact that you all want to have a meeting to talk about this, but it's still going to be four or five years before Nolansville Road's even completed. Holt Road's an interstate in the morning. People will be cutting through this subdivision to get off of Holt Road, I guarantee you. This is just... Enough's enough. I mean, it's... There's so much building going on in this area that, I mean, you can't move. I grew up in Nolansville, and it's just... It's just... Needs to be... Something needs to be done.
Thank you, man. Anyone else? Yep, Councilman? Councilman, come on up.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, our commissioners, and thank you for your service, by the way. I know you guys do as many late nights as we do. I don't know how you guys do it. I really don't on a volunteer basis, but thank you. As it relates to this particular project, I was actually completely shocked out of my skin at 5:55 Tuesday night when I found out my fellow councilman was writing a letter to you all in opposition of this proposal without ever calling me. Kind of shocking, actually. And then to see him here today was even additionally shocking. So I'm glad I actually prepared for this. While I share Fabian's, Councilman Bedney's, concern about traffic on Nolansville Road, and especially on Holt Road and into Edmondson and everything else into my district, which Ms. Beaster's absolutely right. Everyone drives through every single subdivision off of Holt Road to get to Edmondson, to get to Brentwood, and most of them have Rutherford and Wilson County tags. So I'm dealing with traffic right now on a number of different issues, a number of different solutions to this problem, one of which happens to be this particular project, which is required to widen Holt Road at that intersection, which... And add an additional turn lane onto Nolansville, which should help that intersection a little bit while TDOT builds Nolansville Road. And as Councilman Bedney alluded to, yes, $48 million between Metro and DOT has been appropriated to buy the land from Old Hickory Boulevard down to Mill Creek, essentially, a mile and a half south of where this is. All the money to complete the construction has not been appropriated from a state level. It is contained in Mayor Berry's capital improvement budget. So our portion of it's already allocated and ready to go. Correct me if I'm wrong, fellow Councilman Allen. They will finish buying all the land within the next year from right now, and will start construction almost immediately thereafter. And whether or not they start here and move north or start at Old Hickory Boulevard and move south, that's entirely up to them. But this is being done, and I'm going to guess that by the time DOT gets around to widening Nolansville Road, this development will be being built. It's going to coincide pretty close to one another. That's the only reason why I supported it in the first place, that and the fact that it's a 55 and up community. Pretty low impact on traffic, no impact on schools. I have said no to no less than eight other prospective projects for this particular tract of land, one of which was another 380-unit apartment building. Planning staff never got any of these because I basically looked at the developer and said, "No, I'm just going to shoot you if you want to proceed with this." And yeah, I think I did say that. As Mr. Estes has said, we've had not one but two large and long community meetings on this project. Knowing full well how impactful this corner is, we had a meeting back in February. I think 140-some people showed up at that meeting, and Goodall Homes and Land Solutions actually listened to everything that everybody said. I want to say that was a two-hour meeting. They went back to the drawing board. They revised a lot of things. They got with Brandon and the planning staff, who I just... I salute you guys. You guys are the only people who call me at 6:00 in the morning and at midnight, and God bless you for doing that. They worked with planning. They worked with the community. They revised this plan to reflect pretty much everyone's needs, including moving things around and making it much more conducive with the environment, which is still rural for all intents and purposes. They have added, I don't know, how many acres of park space? 13 acres of park space with established walking trails that they have invited the entire community, both in my district and in Councilman Bedney's district, to use as a public space. I thought that was a great gift to the area since we don't have a parking district for it. At the second meeting, which was held in June, I believe... Forget my dates. Yes, we did take a vote, which is kind of odd for a community meeting, but this was a rather contentious project. From the first meeting, I got, oh, I don't know, several hundred phone calls and emails, and separating it out, it was about 50-50 for and against. So we had a second community meeting. Goodall came in, represented their entire project, and took a vote, and it was a little over three-to-one, not four-to-one, but a little over three-to-one in favor of the project. So I considered that to be a reason to support this project. I could go into the 400-plus, single-family units, not age-restricted, not anything restricted, in Fabian Bedney's district, less than one mile from this piece of property. So if Councilman Bedney is seriously worried about impacting traffic on Nolansville Road, he might want to take a look at one of these eight pieces of legislation that is going through council right now and wonder why we've got traffic on Nolansville Road. With that, I ask for your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And the applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal?
I'm going to be even shorter. I forgot to thank the staff. We started working with staff on this six months ago. We've had, I don't know, six, seven revisions and deferrals, so we've taken our time with the staff and with the community, and I am... I understand exactly what Rosemarie's saying, and we're sensitive to it, and we've tried to be sensitive to it in the design, as well as several others. We've removed this out of the floodplain and tried to stay out of all the natural features, so I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work, and thank you.
Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing closed. Chairman, you want to go first?
I think the councilman's done his homework on finding out when the state's going to acquire the property, when the capital budget's going to start putting their portion in, and I believe these are going to coincide. It's going to improve Holt Road for several hundred feet plus the turning lane on Nolansville Road. I think this is one of the examples of what we were facing before of the traffic not having an impact or solution to it. So I'm going to support this and listen to the other commissioners.
Since I'm now 55, I guess this is where I get to move.
I think this is the lowest impact for this potential tract of land, and I like the improvements they're making to Holt Road. I like the potential timing with the improvements along Nolansville Road, so I'm as well going to support this.
I'm not 55, so I will not be necessarily moving there, but it sounds like a great project. So age restriction, and this is just a question for my own, how is it... How do you go about restricting age for the units? Don't mind me.
SP, so SPs are enforceable through the Metro, but through... It's also through... Oh, no?
SP, yes, but not for age. I'm like, that's a... We can't really do that.
There's federal regulations that govern it.
Because it says it's not affordable housing. So there's... The question about affordable housing is in there, and that's one of the things we're talking about on a regular basis.
I don't think 55-plus would ever qualify. The price range is probably qualified, but I don't think they qualify.
What is the price range?
There'll be... They'll be between 180 and 220 mostly.
Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Dibs?
You know, the process that the councilman went through, it was very detailed through, and I'm supportive of this. I think it'll be, the way it's, way it's been proposed and designed, I think it'll be good.
Council lady?
I agree.
Commissioner Clift?
Do you want me to say more?
I'm impressed with the councilman's tenacity in keeping at this till something approval, approvable could be presented to us. We've all, many of us have been in the situation of trying to find win-wins, and they're not there. I also think a word can be said for the other council member, Councilman Bednay, who wants to take every opportunity to explain to us, appropriately so, that, that infrastructure needs to be happening before or at the same time as development. In this case, it appears to be, but it's not something we can hear too often. So I'm glad that both, both councilmembers made the comments they did. I'm fully supportive of this project.
Commissioner Clark?
I don't think I have anything new to add. I agree that it's, you know, after the last project, we were talking about a lot of development coming in before we had a chance to really look at the impact on the, on the roads. It looks like these are moving in concert, so it seems like a good project.
Good deal. We need a motion?
Move approval.
Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye with, and to meet all the staff conditions. All right. Passes.
Taking a break?
And why don't we take a break? And we'll be back in about 10 minutes. 13A and 13B, if you're here for another item, these are our only two items left, so go ahead on 12A.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be presenting on item 12A, 2016 CP-001-001, a request to amend the Jolton Community Plan. I'll be followed by the presentation on 12B for the associated zone change request. This is a request to amend the Jolton Community Plan at 7330, 7340, 7350, 7360, and 7368 White's Creek Pike, and various properties at the other three corners of the interchange with, at I-24 and White's Creek Pike. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The associated zone change request is shown in blue, the five properties on White's Creek Pike. In discussion with the applicants early on, one of the things that they pointed to as in favor of the, the request was the existence of similar zoning on the other three corners of White's Creek Pike and I-24, as well as on the south side, similar, a similar use to what, what the request is for, with an interest in allowing a gas station that would include truck refueling. The current policy for the area is T2 Rural Neighborhood Center with a small amount of T2 Rural Maintenance and some CO conservation throughout the area. The requested policy would be for T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center with the CO conservation policy to remain. T2 Rural Neighborhood Center is intended to preserve, enhance, and create rural neighborhood centers that fit with a rural character and provide consumer goods and services for the surrounding rural communities. T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center is intended to enhance and create suburban neighborhood centers that serve suburban neighborhoods generally within a five-minute drive. Generally, we look for T2 Rural Neighborhood Center for compatible zoning districts. We look for MUNA or Design-Based Zoning District. For Suburban Neighborhood Center, we generally look for MUNA, RM9A, RM15A, RM20A, CN, CL, ON, OL, SEN, or Design-Based Zoning. Part of the context for our analysis is a very slow evolution in the planned vision for Jolton over the past 25 years. When the first community plan for Jolton was done, the vision was that Jolton would eventually suburbanize. That is, was the context for prior decisions for CL and CS zoning in this area, as well as the sewer pipe running up White's Creek. Over the past 25 years, through zone change requests, other development decisions, community plans, and then finally Nashville Next, the vision for Jolton shifted to be permanently rural, and that was adopted formally as part of Nashville Next last summer. Because of this slow evolution from suburban to rural, we've taken a close look at the decision, decision to shift from rural to suburban with this request. There have been two community meetings associated with this request. The first was the formal Planning Department Community Meeting for the Plan Amendment, which was held in late May. A follow-up meeting was held last Thursday by the applicant that staff attended to further the discussion. The community sentiment was fairly divided about this. A number of benefits as well as concerns were brought up. Benefits included potentially lower prices, more convenience and a simpler travel pattern, and improved services if something like a gas station were to come in, or other commercial use, as well as increasing Nashville's tax base and the presence of similarly zoned property at the other three corners. On the other hand, the concerns that were raised related to maintaining the rural character, the presence of truff traffic, truck traffic and idling, impact to other existing businesses, increased traffic noise and lighting, and lack of community benefits. From our analysis, T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center is not supported by the surrounding land uses. All of the area surrounding this interchange is intended to remain rural into the future. T2 Rural Neighborhood Center is better suited to the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map, which identifies the entire northern portion of the county as part of what we call the Green Network, which includes rural policy areas. In particular, there is extensive conservation policy that requires careful design to protect its undeveloped character. T2 Rural Neighborhood Center policies that are already, or I'm sorry, the other three corners of the interchange beyond the applicant's request that are currently zoned, CL and CS, have T2 Rural Neighborhood Center applied to them after those zone, zone change happens, happened, in order to guide redevelopment to be a more of a rural character, to, you know, as, as further changes or redevelopment happens on those other three corners, encouraging them to be more of a rural character than they are now. Finally, the Jolton population and traffic have not grown to the extent that rural character should be reconsidered in our assessment. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, sir. We'll open this item for, oh, I'm sorry, we also have to consider the other.
This is the associated zone change. The properties included in the zone change are the properties outlined in red. This is a smaller area that was considered for the policy amendment. The request is to rezone from single-family residential to commercial limited. Staff is recommending disapproval. Another view of the site. Existing zoning, again, is single-family residential. The density, or it would permit up to 10 single-family lots, given the acreage on the site. Proposed zoning is commercial limited. It's approximately 8.82 acres, so the maximum floor area that would be permitted is over 230,000 square feet. This is, in the Jolton Community Plan, the current policy is conservation and rural neighborhood center. Conservation is the lighter green area, and the neighborhood center policy is in the darker green. The request is not consistent with the existing land use policies. This type of zoning is not appropriate in rural, in rural areas, and they cannot achieve a design that would be consistent with the rural area. Commercial limited would permit development at a scale that's not consistent with the character. It does not include design requirements that would ensure a rural design does not include adequate standards to ensure that the streams that bisect the property are preserved in order to maintain the rural character. So conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval as the request is not consistent with the existing policy.
All right. Thank you. Now, we will declare this item open for public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes. And then you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Good afternoon. My name is David Code, and I'm with the firm of Kimley Horn and Associates, and we're planners and civil engineers here in Nashville, Tennessee. And I am working on the request of the property owners today to request this zone change for the property for commercial-type services. Our goal today is to inform the commission of the history of the property owner's desires that are now applied for the rezoning request, and to provide opportunities to serve the larger community in years to come through Jolton. What I would like to do at this point is ask Ms. Krista Elliott to speak on behalf of the family members themselves.
Thank you. I'm the daughter of one of the property owners, Ricky Kniffer. The property up for discussion tonight belongs to two families, the Enos family and the Kniffer family. This property, to my knowledge, has been in the Enos family for five generations and in my family since the 1940s. This property in particular was purchased by both my grandparents and great-grandparents to farm and raise their families. After they purchased their land, not only did the interstate come through, but T-Dot immediately took a large portion of their front yard for the widening of White's Creek Pike. It forever changed the dynamic of this property, which is no longer suitable for residential living, and changed the character of the community as a whole. My grandparents lived on this community, lived on this property until they passed, leaving it to their children. After much discussion with my family and the Enos family, we decided that it was the right time to look at long-term options for this property. We looked around the community and what was located at the interchange. We looked at the zoning classifications of those properties and the zoning classification of the property directly across the street. We believe the rezoning to be consistent with the surrounding parcels and are simply asking for you to allow this property to develop, as the other parcels have and will develop. We have never objected to nor opposed growth of any other parcels around us because we believe that to be fair use of the land, given its location. We have supported this community through decades of change and expected the community would in turn support us when the time came. We went to our neighbors, we had two community meetings, and spoke to Jolton residents regarding the rezoning. We have obtained close to 150 signatures of people who live directly in this community who are in support of the change. My parents still reside here. They own two homes within two miles of this property. My family worships here. My sister teaches here. My nieces and nephews go to school and daycare here. It's fair to say my family is fully vested in this community. We feel the best use for this land can't be achieved with its current zoning. We would appreciate your consideration for the rezoning so that our land is compatible for the zoning that has taken place around us. Thank you.
As illustrated in the plan on the slide before you, you know, this property lies adjacent to an off-ramp constructed by T-Dot for the purpose of connectivity to the White's Creek area and the Jolton area. It was perfectly placed there as part of a larger community transportation system for the greater community. It uses the interstate to travel to and through our community itself and supplies us with the growing consumer goods of our community requires. You know, Nashville has three interstate systems that come through, both for serving the regional area and the national commerce within our community. The property of this interchange has developed over several years and has local and regional travelers. There's a hotel there, there are restaurants there, there's a travel center there, all exists today and been built over a period of time. You know, as Nashville Next highlights, we are a fast-growing community. I was involved in a lot of those community discussions, and by the way, we're looking at being the size of Denver in the next 30-plus years. But what it doesn't really, what I want to make sure this commissioner understands is don't forget the fact that the widening of the Panama Canal, the dredging of the major seaports on the East Coast, all would drive more commerce through our community because of our interstate systems. This will increase the demand on our interstates and the needs of port services related to that travel. T2 NC is what is on all of Jolton, one classification for the whole Jolton area, and it talks about goods and services for the rural community. But we are discussing today is appropriate locations for businesses that serve the larger community that utilizes our interstate system and provides the goods and services that bring to our community. Our request for a policy change for the parcels only on our side for a T3 CC, which would correspond with the CL zoning request. These parcels are positioned to serve the larger community due to their location, and if you look at this map, you can see how this location and this interchange was developed for commercial uses that have served both the local and the community at large. As our local and regional community grows, we need to provide appropriate locations for both. And this body and the council over the years have recommended and approved three-quarters of this interchange to develop in a manner which would provide a location to support both. All my client is requesting is to be allowed the same opportunity and benefit as others received over time. My client gave up half of their farm to provide room for a transportation system to serve the larger community. This should be able to be reasonable, expect that the remaining half has the rights for the property, to allow the property to serve the larger community with businesses that would provide for all the needs of those using the interstate system as well as the community. We've had two community meetings, and after the first one, we went out and specifically asked neighbors for their input as to the rezoning. And if you'll slide two Greg slides, one more. This map reflects over 140 neighbors within this community that support this rezoning request. And if you look at the insert, we even went through the neighborhood that's immediately adjacent to this and had support with it. Now, there's been a lot of conversation within the community. I would like to reserve two minutes at the end for rebuttals, but I think it's one of those issues that we are growing, and the Jolton area has seen slow growth, but as we know, we need to continue providing support services, not only for the neighbors and the residents here today and the coming, but also for the community that we're bringing in through the transportation system, through visitors, which increases tax base, because all those things need to have appropriate locations. When I look at five parcels adjacent to an interstate off-ramp that was built to handle these types of services and commuter routes through the community, I think it's appropriate to say that this type of zoning, based on what's already there, would be appropriate to add into the system. And we ask for you to seriously look at this and vote for the rezoning of this property today. Thank you very much, and reserve about two minutes.
Thank you. You have two minutes for rebuttal? And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of the project? Please come forward. And if you're here to support the project, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
I'm Ricky Kniffer, one of the owners of this property. I live at 7747 Greenbrier Road. I've lived in Jolton all my life. I was born and raised on this property. I'm not asking any favors. All I'm asking for me and my family, I have one corner out of four that's not zoned commercial. I walk straight across White's Creek Pike. It's 20-something acres zoned commercial. Nothing's built there yet. South of the interstate, there is commercial business already operating. I'm just, I just want what's fair for me and my family. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Ashley Kniffer. I am the daughter-in-law of Ricky and Debbie Kniffer, who own this property. And I actually travel White's Creek Pike twice a day, every day, to go to work in Nashville. I take my daughter to Jolton to daycare, and then I come back down White's Creek Pike to go home. I understand that, you know, there is some opposition to this, but we completely support the rezoning of this. I think it would bring more people to Jolton. It would be a tax revenue for the city, for Davidson County. We are the northernmost part of Davidson County, and I think it would only be beneficial for it to be rezoned to commercial to match the other three quadrants right around that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Kniffer. I live at 7747 Greenbrier Road. As a resident of Jolton, I support this rezoning to commercial. With two of its boundaries, the exit ramp of the interstate and a busy state highway, this zoning to commercial is only appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patricia Williams. I live at 2777 Union Hill Road, Jolton. I'm one of the owners. That was my parents' property as well. And... That was my parents' property as well, and I do support the zoning for it. It's, we are the third of the four corners. The exit above us is all commercial at all four corners, and the exit below us is commercial at all four corners, and I support this one to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Perry. I live at 1015 Brookview Court in Goldsfield. I grew up in Jolton, born and raised, played ball in Jolton. I worship in Jolton. My niece is in daycare in Jolton. My parents still live in Jolton. Their house is actually behind the property that's being zoned commercial. I am for this property to be zoned commercial. Every property around it is zoned commercial on the four corners, except for this one. People are worried about traffic. White's Creek Pike has always been busy, and they have proposed to widen the roads to deal with the traffic issues. So I just, I am all for this property being zoned commercial. Thank you.
My name is Ethan Dye. I live at 3503 Baxter Road, which is right off of White's Creek Pike, and I am in favor of this property being zoned commercial for a variety of reasons, but I believe that it will help our community overall. I drive on White's Creek Pike every single day, and I know you've heard this quite a few times already, but it only seems fair to me that this land be rezoned to commercial when all the other three adjacent areas off the interstate are already that way. The land there is already being treated as commercial, and for someone like me who drives on White's Creek every day and getting off of that ramp there, for me to go home, I'd take a ride, and so if I were able to stop right there and get gas or for whatever reason, it'd be more convenient for me and others like me who live that way off of 24 than to go back towards town to get whatever we need. And so I am in support of this being rezoned, and I believe that it's only fair to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Pass. My address is 2906 Lisa Drive, and I am support, in support of the rezoning of this property to commercial. I've been traveling this interchange for the last 15 years, and from a strictly convenience perspective, having this property zoned commercial would save time for myself and the countless others who travel north as they exit the interstate, not only those individuals that live in Jolton, but also residents of Greenbrier, Cooper Town, and Springfield who take this exit as well. It's a, not only a safety issue, but it's a time issue, having to stop at the interstate, make a left turn, backtrack a half a mile to go to a convenience store, get gas, do anything of that nature. So my wife and I support the rezoning, as you've heard. This is the only quadrant of the interchange that is not zoned commercial. With the area being right next to the interstate, I can imagine that the property values have suffered because of that. From a, I've already covered the safety and time perspective that it would save, also potentially provide jobs to the community, having it zoned commercial, and then finally generate more tax dollars for the local government. Thank you for your time.
Kenneth Williams, 4167 Kniffer Road. My mother, this was my grandparents' property, and I'd just like to say that I'm for it. I don't see that many, I can't say that I see any property that's right beside the interstate that's not commercial, so I'd just like to say that I'm for it.
Hi, I'm Pam Anderson. I'm an heir of the Ennis family, and I come here this evening to respectfully ask your permission and consideration to change our land into commercial. As an heir, all of our family, you know, really worked hard on it as a farm, and we would appreciate this and a time-changing of the world, and our family has always been respectful of the Jolton community and worked hard in it. I still, and matter of fact, 54 of my 62 years, and yes, ladies, I told my age, I've lived in Jolton. I go to church in Jolton, and I support lots of things there, and this consideration of this decision to change to commercial is very important to me because Jolton is very important to me in all its respects and everything of the friends, family that I've made over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Hyde. I reside at 4473 Mount Sharon Road. I was born and raised in Jolton. When I became of age, I got married and moved up into Robertson County. I travel White's Creek Pike twice a day, coming to and from work to Nashville. I get off at Jolton exit. This land, it should be commercial. It's viewed as commercial by everyone around. It's right off the interstate. No one would want to live there and raise their family there. The proposed, proponent of what's going to be placed there, they are going to support and be very, they're going to support all the stream issues, they're going to conserve as much as they can. It would be very viable for this land to be changed to commercial. So I just approve, or I request that the overlay be changed from the residential to commercial. Thank you.
Hello, my name is BJ Anderson. I live at 3211 Union Hill Road. I am a 30-year Jolton person, and I think this should be zoned commercial, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Anderson, 3211 Union Hill Road. I think most everybody's pretty much given you all the fours and whatnot. Great community. I think I kind of disappointed that these two families are being kind of deprived from having this zoned commercial since all the property in the exit before and the exit after are also commercial. I don't see a hindrance whatsoever for this being commercial, and I think it might be, depending on what went in there, if it was another fueling station, it would definitely bring more competition because we seem to have the highest gas prices around in the county. So I would just consider, if you could consider approving this to be from a T2 to a T3 and from the RS40 to the CL, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Pass. I live at 2906 Lisa Drive. I am the teacher in Jolton that my sister was talking about. I travel White's Creek Pike daily, coming to work, going home from work, coming to worship, going to take my children to the babysitters, and I feel like this property needs to be zoned commercial. It's certainly not suitable to be residential anymore, as I certainly wouldn't want to raise my children there, even though I grew up playing in those yards. It's lost that value. It needs to be commercial. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's John Lawrence. I live at 7200 Appleview Road, Goldsfield, which is part of District 1. Moved to Jolton, that area approximately 20 years ago, and my children were raised there. The big thing is, when you look at this, there's literally hundreds of vehicles that travel from this point on I-24 to Springfield every day, seven days a week. They pass, pass this property. They drive past this property, drive seven miles into Robertson County and buy gas and other goods. Davidson County is missing this because otherwise they have to drive, turn left, cross traffic, go back into Jolton. I drive to Springfield to buy gas. It's 27 cents a gallon cheaper. So I'd much rather buy it right here than drive to Springfield to buy it. Thank you.
Please.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Tomlinson. I live at 4953 Edens Creek Road, and I support for this land to be rezoned as commercial. Thank you.
My name's Joseph Kniffer. My family's who has submitted the application to have this land rezoned, and I don't want to sit here and just keep beating a dead horse over, but there is one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I would like to bring your attention, and Nashville Next is, everyone's saying that Jolton wants to retain its rural character, but this particular property hasn't had a rural character since the interstate was built. And my family, we're not asking for partiality, we're just asking for equality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time in the hearing of this. My name's Connie Stags. I live at 3400 Binkley Road, which is within walking distance of this. Rezoning this to commercial is proper for a lot of reasons, but, and they've been stated, but the other areas around it are commercial. The fact that it's right on the interstate, it's not suitable for residential dwelling. I appreciated what was brought up earlier, that the people who originally bought it, bought it when the area was rural, and they've lost a lot of their property, both to the interstate and to White's Creek Pike. The tax dollars that are being lost, because he's right, people coming into Springfield are not going to come back under the interstate to buy their gas. They're going onto Springfield to get their gas. So I think we're losing tax revenue there. So for those reasons and others, I ask that you rezone it to commercial. And in this election season, let me just say, isn't it great that in this country that we even have these processes? So thank y'all for your time serving on the commission, and thanks for the hearing.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Yes, I'm Vicki Barnes, and I live at 3084 Union Hill Road. My husband was not able to come here tonight. He was born and raised in Jolton. We are for this. There's really not a reason why at this corner it should not be commercial. Like it was just stated, you really can't have a residential property there. If somebody wants kids, you've got to worry about them going out in the road right there. There's no yards. It's, just makes sense to have this as a commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, now we're ready for those who want to speak in opposition. Please sign up behind the microphone and state your name and your address. You get two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I notice the light's already on, so I'll really be quick, and commission members. My name's Gary Moore. I live at 2946 Morgan Road, obviously in Jolton, Tennessee. I'd like to start by saying that a lot of hard work has gone into developing the Jolton Community Plan, and all the property that was talked about that's listed already as CL, most of it is on the south side of I-24. That was taken in consideration when the plan was looked at, when the Jolton Community Plan was looked at. Also, in one of our public meetings, nobody's mentioned the fact that this commercial property, they wanted commercial to build a truck stop with 18 wheelers coming and going, and you're talking about a traffic problem. You're really going to have a traffic problem. You've got 18 wheelers trying to get in and out of that intersection there with vehicles trying to get off the interstate, even with a light there, that's going to create a big problem. And we were told at the first public meeting that this was not going to be a truck stop. They said very clear, it would be a fueling station, a fueling center, I think they called it. So I looked up the definition on the internet of a truck stop, and I'll read you just a couple of excerpts. A truck stop, also known as a transport cafe in the United Kingdom, and as a travel center, but major change in the United States is a commercial facility which provides refueling, rest, and improvises parking, and often ready-made food and other services to motorists and truck drivers. Truck stops are usually located near a busy road. Also, in the United States, in the 1990s, Truck Stops of America, TA, changed its name to Travel Centers of America to reflect the marketing strategy. There is no exact distinction between a truck stop or a travel center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Martha Collins. I live at 4083 Bernard Road, which is only a couple of miles from the exit, but we weren't notified of any meetings about this proposed project. And, well, we don't have much at the Jolton exit. We've got the funeral home and the bank and a couple of dollar stores and a flower shop and three, count them, three gas stations, so we really don't need another one there. And one of them keeps closing up and reopening due to slow business, so gas is not what we need there. The buried fuel tanks are also dangerous because of the karst formation in our soil that causes seepage in underground areas, and there's a creek on that property that the fuel could seep into, and it flows eventually into the Cumberland River, which could jeopardize everyone's drinking water. And also, there would be a lot of transient people at the facility at all hours, and we have no police protection out there. In fact, my neighbor's house was burglarized a while back, and another neighbor called 911, and the police blazed out there in 48 short minutes to check it out, so that could be a problem, too. It's not the issue of being zoned commercial, it's the truck stop, and surely there are other alternatives. We still need a grocery store or even a nice restaurant, so I hope that you will please say no to the truck stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Burkhead, and I live at 7721 White's Creek Pike. I also am not opposed to commercial property. My concern is the location for a proposed truck stop. Exit 35 is known as the gateway to Jolton. We do not have a town square, per se, so when you get off this exit, it sets a tone for what our community is about, and I feel like that if a truck stop goes in there, then we will be known as the truck stop exit. I have had several conversations with a developer who is interested in the 77 acres across the street from this. They have checked into that pretty in-depth. When he found out that there's a potential truck stop going in across the street, he said that he is not interested at this time, that what he's looking into would not be compatible with a truck stop across the street. So I feel like that if this went in, it would greatly diminish the rural residential community that we've established in Jolton, so I just don't feel like that it is compatible. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Rogers. I live at 4060 Bernard Road in Jolton. The post-truck stop that Thornton's wants to build for the corner of White's Creek Pike and I-24 at Jolton flies in the face of the Long Range Planning Guide Nashville Next adopted in 2015 by the Metro Planning Commission and the citizens of Jolton. Thornton's major intent here is to provide services to commercial diesel traffic along this corridor. Thornton's even admitted in the last public meeting that they are planning for around 250-plus diesel trucks to pass through this station per day. That's a lot of traffic. However, Nashville Next states that the number of already existing small rural neighborhood centers are intended primarily to provide services for Jolton residents and are not intended as major residential or commercial hubs. Nashville Next's zoning guide states that to maintain Jolton's rural character and avoid encouraging substantial residential and commercial growth, that no major transportation changes are proposed in this community as our major collector, our major and collector street patterns were already established. The latter would also preclude Thornton's plan of widening White's Creek Pike to five lanes, which will create a traffic nightmare. Based on this, as well as other facts that I had outlined in a letter to the Planning Commission on July 12, 2016, I respectfully ask that you disapprove this truck stop for Jolton, Tennessee. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Winters. I live at 2900 Morgan Road in Jolton. At its proposed location, right off the exit ramp from I-24, Thornton's truck stop will have the potential to cause a traffic nightmare as people from both Davidson and Robertson Counties travel up and down White's Creek to I-24 per day. Thornton's wants to add a traffic light just beyond the northbound exit ramp at I-24. However, this move would cause a major problem to the traffic flow in the area as people who normally flow onto White's Creek Pike in a steady stream between 3 and 5 will now be stuck waiting on a light. They will be forced to sit at the exit ramp along with semis, thus probably leading to a backup of stopped traffic on I-24. As Thornton's projected, as estimated semi-truck flow of 200 to 250 rigs per day, this will not only increase the traffic level in the rural area, but also raise the level of 24-hour a day noise and air pollution. Thornton's has plans to have at least 10 semi-truck bays for drivers to park their rigs to rest, but who constitutes this rest duration was never made clear in either of the public meetings. During the May 24, 2016, community meeting at Paradise Ridge, a concerned resident asked for clarification on this point. According to the codes department, any idle time in the vehicle, that is, not getting gas, not shopping, not stretching legs, would be in violation. This is a violation reported to Property Standards Division, but would need someone, such as employees or neighbors, to report it. Property Standards is not available at Property Standards is not available at night. The police would need to be called.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bill Robertson. I live at 1310 Roberts Road. I can certainly understand the families wishing to dispose of the property and the difficulties with that. However, my concerns with the proposed plan amendment and the rezoning are twofold. First and foremost, changing the community plan would profoundly and irreversibly impact the future development of the Jolton area. We're at a very delicate stage of development in that community. You know, the project is sort of outwardly focused, and the idea is to bring in long-distance truckers, really. The idea that we're going to reduce gas prices, we have two gas stations and one travel center already on the other side of the road, and that doesn't seem to have done anything for gas prices. So it really brings no benefit to the current community members, and it certainly doesn't sort of fit with, even with the T-3 doesn't seem to fit in that sense. We are definitely a community that is growing, but we need to grow appropriately. My second concern is with traffic, like a lot of the people here. I drive this every day, and at the community meetings, the folks from Thornton's had a preliminary traffic study where they suggested putting a couple of lights in. But let me just say, from an engineering point of view, their analysis was not convincing at all. They weren't even sure which sort of entrance on the, that they would put the traffic light at. And I don't think they understand the traffic flows. As I said, a lot of us travel that every day, and we understand the traffic flow there on that ramp. It's got a very high number of accidents. And even the expanding the travelway, there's a curve afterward. It would make, it would not be something that can be easily solved. So for those reasons, I'm opposed to this development. Thank you.
My name is Melanie Leslie. I live at 5543 Dividing Ridge Road. I am opposed to this, though I am sympathetic to the family situation. The main thing I am concerned about, as you know, we are currently fighting a gas compressor plant wanting to come into our neighborhood, which would increase air pollution and water pollution and noise pollution. This development would essentially do just exactly the same thing, as well as being an opener of the gate for bringing in that compressor plant. It will increase air pollution with the increased truck traffic. It will increase water pollution due to the underground storage tanks and the steering over karstic limestone foundation. It will also definitely increase noise pollution and light pollution of the, just exactly like the gas compressor plant is, which we are attempting to fight and have just attempted, to start an air permit change to this. So this is just a key way to open up more industrial development in what is a rural, what we wish to keep, as a community plan shows a rural industry. Thank you. Bye.
Hello, my name is Kelly Lewis. I live on Sycamore Creek Road in Jolton. And I would just say again, to reiterate what those who are, you know, not in favor of this, is that the proposed use of this land does not fit with the recommendations of Nashville Next, that was both the Jolton citizens' desires, as well as this Planning Commission's desire, that's just a year old. We realize that growth is inevitable, but we're asking for, we want growth that enhances our community, not, and benefits us, not something that is going to be a truck refueling center. I'm sure none of you want to say, get off at the truck refueling center to come to my house. And I travel White's Creek Pike back and forth every day. I don't want to pull into a truck stop where there's big rigs, you know, sitting there idling to get my gas, and I'm not going to use it. But I think this commission has a real opportunity, as Nashville, as you've all heard, and, you know, earlier tonight about what's happening in one of the districts where, you know, they've got so much population, you know, coming on top of each other. There's very few places in Nashville left that people can go out and build nice homes on nice pieces of land, and Jolton could be that for Davidson County, as opposed to people leaving Davidson County and moving to Williamson County, or Sumner County, or Wilson County, to, you know, that could happen in Jolton. It's beautiful out there. My husband and I left Hendersonville to buy a property in Jolton to build, you know, our dream house. But you're not going to get people out there if you stick a truck fueling center out there, and it does not help. It would help Nashville to let nice homes be built out there, instead of a truck center, and you get the gases, the taxes off gas. And I will say that there was a petition put online this week, and we have over 213 people who have signed up for us.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mona Crabtree. I live at 3636 Baxter Road in Jolton. I own the property at 7410 White's Creek Pike. That is two properties north of the property in question. My father built it in 1963. I grew up in the house. And just as some of the people here said, who would want to live there by a truck stop? This change is out of character with our very close-knit residential agricultural community. The change offers no benefit for our community, but rather invites in transients in huge numbers. Thornton's themselves estimates 250 tractor-trailer rigs in and out of this area every day. It would set a horrible precedent for future development, and adversely affect any plans for the type and quality growth and development we would like to see and that we need in our community. It would harm existing locally-owned businesses that have served us well. We have three service stations, gas stations, in a half-mile stretch just on the other side of the interstate. These are all either locally owned, where the owners live in the community and own these businesses and have invested in the community, or the property is owned by people in the community and leased out. This would do a lot of harm to those businesses, I believe. This is an environmentally sensitive area, and my daddy always called Jolton a swamp on a hill, because we have so much groundwater out there. And I hesitate to think what would happen with the runoff of fuel into the creek that's on the property. And I just ask that you vote to disapprove this plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Council Lady. My name's Larry Crabtree. I live at 3636 Baxter Road. You just heard from my wife. I'm also opposed to this. I'm not going to hash, go over everything that everybody else has said in opposition, because I think they've raised many valid and, you know, good concerns. I want to point out, one of the things that one of the people said is that the proposal would have on that, at the exit ramp, one light there, to be able to have traffic regulated there. They would go up to that next road that goes off to the right, they were talking about another light there for the passenger traffic to come off. The tractor-trailer rig traffic is supposed to be at that next exit entrance driveway up there with no light, and we're talking about 250 or more trucks a day pulling across north and southbound traffic with no light to get them out there. And it would not be feasible to have two lights or three in a row there. Again, I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone else said. I just think that this is, again, it might be valid for commercial for some use, but not for a refueling center or truck stop, because it's just putting too much traffic in addition to the hundreds of other traffic cars and automobiles and trucks that go off at that exit every day. Basically request that you disapprove this. If you did happen to approve it, I would request for it to go to commercial, would be with restrictions to prevent it from being in the nature of a truck stop, truck fueling center, because that's just totally out of the character of the nature of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sarah Todd, and I live at 5026 Clarksville Highway. I have owned property, several properties, in Jolton and White's Creek, and have lived in that area for 50 years. And I love that somebody called it Paradise Ridge, because that was the original term for Jolton and White's Creek. I totally agree with everything who is opposed to this. I strongly oppose it. I can be down in downtown Nashville now, from where I live, in approximately 10 to 12 minutes, there is no traffic. I can only imagine what it would be like trying to get to Springfield, or to downtown Nashville, or anywhere else with this kind of traffic. All night, we've heard people talking about what is going on with the traffic. Jolton is one place where you can get to the country from downtown in maybe the most 15 minutes. And also, as far as the other businesses up there, at one of our meetings, the man who owns the Dairy Queen up there in Jolton, who is a lifelong resident, and his parents, et cetera, stood up and cried, because he knew that if that truck stop came up there and sold food, he would go bankrupt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. I specifically asked for the two minutes for my time, so that you could hear from both sides. This is an issue that is at the heart of Jolton. And as you've heard from many of these applicants, they're talking about two different issues. A lot of them are concerned about a proposed Thornton's truck stop. And I want to make sure it was clear. The Kniffers and the other families have had multiple offers to them on this property. They have an offer by Thornton's to develop it. Instead of bringing this matter as just a straight rezoning to you, they went to the community with Thornton's to say, before we come into the community, we want to make sure you understand the quality of development we want to bring with this application. They're asking for rezoning for CL, which would allow them to do hotels, grocery, all these other activities. But they do and did want to make sure the community knew that they were intending, if this moves forward, for a travel center or a Thornton's. Now, all of you have seen Thornton's. It serves both the local community with gas and services inside, as well as this will have the ability to serve truck traffic that's coming on the interstate currently. It is not to generate new traffic that's currently on the interstate, it's to provide them an opportunity to be able to have this exit that was built for commercial-type uses to be used for that services, and provide services for both the local community, as well as the community that serve and the population of Nashville as it grows. So as you look at this and the proximity of those pieces, it has had a lot of discussion. People are in favor for a majority of commercial zoning, but they do not like the situation of a proposed use that Thornton would bring. But in commercial zoning, there are opportunities, both good and bad, that needs to be reflected. And we appreciate you looking at this for the right type of zoning and the right types of uses served the larger community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
And, Mr. Schellman, do you want to speak at this end?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, when I first got here, I think I said I wasn't sure why I was asked to be here. I think I know why.
Now you know.
Thank you, Council Lady Hert. So, and I was going to say, I'm glad that this is Council Lady Hert's measure. She's going to have to deal with it, but so is the rest of the council eventually. Very interesting, I had a chance to talk to a number of people on the, when I was outside and listened to their comments. Strong arguments on both sides. I don't think the council lady was, I know she's getting calls, if you read that letter, she's getting calls from numerous people on both sides. I think she's going to have to work with the folks and try to figure this one out. But I applaud both sides. I thought both sides made very good presentations. I think in the end, one of the things that I remember was, when I was talking to folks in Jolton, is, in the end, we want what's best for Jolton. And, you know, Jolton is one of those areas that, you know, if it's done right, and if the plans are there, and has the ability, or we give it the ability to do some wonderful things, we're just going to have to figure out what that is. And I know you all have a tough decision, and then eventually, I think the council's going to have a tough decision. But anyway, I just wanted to say, now I know why I was invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schellman. All right. So we'll declare the public hearing closed, and why don't we start with Stuart? We'll start on this side. Commissioner Clifton.
Well, this has been an interesting presentation on all sides. I am, I would like to ask a question to start with, and that is, outside of this intersection, staff, what other close-by commercial, or retail, or other business-related operations are in the near area, outside of this intersection with the interstate and White's Creek Pike?
I believe primarily continuing south on White's Creek Pike, the rest of sort of the downtown Jolton area. Further down White's Creek Pike, there are other smaller rural neighborhood centers, and then down the interstate at other interchanges.
Other exits? How close are they?
I'm not sure.
A few miles or miles? Okay, thank you. Well, there's one thing I'm not sure about, and that is whether RS40, which is current zoning, is the best zoning for all times for this area. I don't know if that's the only one that works. Is that correct? That is the current zoning, right?
That is the current zoning. The policy here, the policy request, is for the areas shown in the darker green that would go from T2 to T3. The areas shown in the lighter green, which take up the majority of the center of this site, are all conservation policy. And so even with the policy request, only portions of this site change from T2 to T3.
Right.
And there are streams, a stream that runs through this. I don't know if we pointed that out clearly during the presentation, but there is a stream that runs through part of this property. That's why the conservation policy is on that.
Right. Well, as I say, I am not entirely sure that the current RS40 is the only potentially proper zoning and attendant policy that would enable something else. Maybe there is something else. So I'm not sure about that. I am sure that any underlying change in the policy of the area, as much as we discussed it all during Nashville Next, and as little rural area as we have in the county, I am certain that that should only be changed by a two-thirds majority of the council, and not by a change in what this commission has thought pretty consistently over the last year or two about the area. I understand the inherent logic of, since some of the other parts of that intersection are more owner-friendly in terms of how many things they can do with it. I understand why people would want that, and if I owned it, I might want that, for sure. I don't think, I don't think we have heard a compelling enough argument to essentially overrule the process we used to come up with what we've come up with over the last year or so in Nashville, and that's for this area. So I'm not saying there's not something in the future that might be less, that might not be considered. I just, I just know this, this is not what I intend to be for today.
I certainly also appreciate the statements that have been made on both sides of the issue. It makes it something that's going to take a lot of thought to come to a conclusion. I will say, as someone who lives right next to an interstate ramp, it can be done. And I have a gas station catty-cornered on the other side of the interstate, and one gas station works for me. I think, you know, if we look at this from a policy perspective, I would agree with Councilmember Clifton, that you can't get any more rural. Councilmember Clifton, that you can't get any more rural, you know, square footage. We can always, you know, decide something can be denser, but it's hard to undense it once you've, once you've done that. And I also respect the process that's gone into the Nashville Next community character decisions, and would agree that that should not be changed lightly. So I would, I would stand in the same position, I believe.
There we go. Commissioner Clifton?
Yeah, it seems kind of, it seems like there was a lot of thought that went into it. I do have one question about the T2, the commercial that is allowed in a T2.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me, yeah, what is allowed in a T2 commercial?
Jason, this might be for you. MUN zoning is allowed generally?
Smaller-scale commercial is permitted, I would say, on this site because of the amount of conservation policy and the streams and the stream buffers. If there were to be any commercial development on the site through a rezoning, we would be looking for something in the form of an SP to maintain those environmental features and also to have a rural design.
It really, it seems like what was actually planned for it is actually more appropriate, at least just listening, you know, kind of better understanding what the T2 plan was for it, and then having a better understanding of the conservation part of it as well. And really, this is almost feels like it's just not wanting one specific thing that is being, you know, at least talked about, what's being planned for it, is what even the community, I think, is most opposed to. So I kind of feel like right now, this, you know, it's not enough compelling information to change it from what's already been, at least without more, a lot more dialogue. So I'd be more prone to stay with what the present plan is.
I'll first say that I totally understand the concern and the challenge that the Jolton is going through and that the property owners are experiencing. It's disconcerting to be someone who owns a piece of property with your family and then be told, when you've seen things happen around you, that you can't do the same thing to your property. So I understand that. That being said, we had a process, I'm not going to belabor all the points, we've gone through Nashville Next, White's Creek and Jolton were very involved in those community meetings. There's been an ongoing dialogue. And so I, not to rehash what everyone has also said, I sit, I hear when a lot of the folks who are against this, I do appreciate the comment from the attorneys, that it seems to be, the issue is really from the community, is a lot of the issue is the use, not changing the policy, but the use of the property. I would say, from a commissioner's perspective, my concern is changing the policy. Okay? So I'm not as concerned about what type of, I'd be more concerned if somebody was trying to dictate to me, you could sell to this person, but you can't sell to that person. What we're saying is, at this point, we're not comfortable with the changing the policy. It's not about, it's a Thornton's truck stop versus a pilot gas station. It's just, that's not the policy for this piece of property. And that's where we are. And that, and I, and I am at that place. I agree that residential may not be, in fact, to Commissioner Clifton's point, residential, the residential zoning it has now is probably not the best use of that property. But, but going from there to where the proposal is right now is not also, in my opinion, where we need to be either. So it's a lose-lose, I think, in this, in that perspective. That's where we are.
I had the good fortune, growing up, to travel to Jolton to play baseball. I know this area extremely well. I think there will be a point in time in the distant future when a change in policy may be appropriate, but given all the effort that so many people put into Nashville Next, including this particular community, I don't think now is the time to change the policy, and I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Chairman?
Question, staff. This quadrant was a different zone or a different policy because of conservation overlay, is that correct?
Quite understand your question. Can you repeat that?
Well, all the other, the one to the left of it, could, across the street from White's, from this property across White's Creek.
Okay.
Could they, could they build the, I don't know what project they're ultimately going to build, but they're alluding to a truck stop, so could they today go across the street and build a truck stop?
Correct. That's the same zoning they're requesting, CL. They're asking for automobile convenience.
The property across the street requested a zone change in 2003, when the property had a different policy on it that was not T2 rural. And so that property was rezoned, and it has far fewer environmental constraints and...
That was a question that it's, it wasn't, it was a conservation policy or region that caused it to not be the same as it was across the street.
Well, they haven't, hadn't requested it until now on this property, but the conservation policy is certainly a large portion of the analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We need a motion.
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, so on both, on both 12A and...
12A and 12B.
For disapproval. All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Ayes have it. 12A and 12B are disapproved. 13A.
Chairman, I need to recuse myself, please.
You're accused. Have a good night.
Oh, genius.
Well, you may want to stick around for the Parks report. All right. If everybody could quickly move out of the meeting, we still have one item left. If everybody could. And this item was on the consent agenda, and I want to make sure that the folks... Let's make sure that this item was originally on the consent agenda. Are the folks here in opposition still in the room? You're still here?
Okay.
Okay. Just want to make sure. All right. 13A.
Item 13A on your agenda is case number 2016 CP 005 002, a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan. It will be followed by item 13B on the agenda, item 2016 SP 054 001. The request is to amend the East Nashville Community Plan, and the staff recommendation is to approve. And what you're seeing on this slide outlined in blue is the Casey, the Casey Redevelopment District. And this site is part of that redevelopment district and is part of the envisioned Casey Master Plan that is currently being implemented through MDHA. So the site is just a block south of Shelby Avenue, between South 8th Street and South 9th Street, and then Sylvan Street is the, the street that bounds it to the north. The current policy is urban open space, and the proposed policy is urban neighborhood As I stated earlier, the request is part of the envisioned Casey Master Plan that's being implemented over a period of years. There was, has been a planning process in place for that, that MDHA has conducted that began in March of 2013 and is ongoing at this time, and will continue throughout the implementation of the master plan. We are, we have had another amendment filed today that is for this other portion of the master plan in here. And the open space that is being, would be removed by this community plan amendment is being replaced elsewhere on the site through that amendment. So essentially, the open space, although it will be gone from this particular location where there will be a mix of housing in accordance with the urban neighborhood evolving policy, there will be additional open space, basically the redesign of the area. And so therefore, the staff recommendation is to approve.
This is the associated SP for Casey Place, Kirkpatrick Park. This is a request to permit a residential development that areas outlined in red. Staff's recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to the approval of the policy amendment. If it's not approved, the staff would recommend disapproval. Existing zoning is multifamily residential RM20. It would permit a maximum of 96 residential units. This is the proposed SP plan. It's a smaller scale, so I can get wording on there, but it's, calls for 96 multifamily units. Height is limited to three stories, with the exception along South 9th, or 9th through south, it's two stories. Design standards include facade standards, orientation, standards for porches and stoops, raised foundations and glazing. Access would be provided from Sylvan Street, as well as from South 9th Street through a, through a new street on, which would cross, and is shown as Park Street, would also be a private interior street that would connect to Sylvan Street. This is the East Nashville Community Plan. The policy is currently open spaces, CND indicated. Policy does not support the proposed development, however, the proposed policy does support the development as it provides an urban design that is walkable. It also supports several critical planning goals. Inclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to the approval of the policy amendment, and disapproval if the policy amendment is not approved.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing, and the applicant will have 10 minutes with two minutes to reserve for rebuttal.
I'm Ralph Mosley. I'm chairman of the Board of Commissioners for Metropolitan Development Housing and Agency. I am resident of Nashville, 3830 Whitland Avenue, and I say to all of you, thank you so much for your long days and long nights that you put in to make things happen for our city. I have been involved in the Casey neighborhood for some 30 years, mainly through Martha O'Brien. In '05, I got more involved because after I retired, I started delivering meals and reading to kids on Fridays. And so I'm familiar with the neighborhood, I'm familiar with the people who live there. They want the same things for their family that you and I want for ours. And we've had a wonderful process for almost two years now to help design this neighborhood to be what they want. Currently, there's not opportunities for employment. There's very little parking. There's not a lot of opportunities for amenities, and all of that will be part of this new plan. The reason we are here today is that MDHA, by law, has to replace the 719 units that we will take down from this area. Most other housing agencies across the nation go in, wipe out 719, hand the residents a voucher, and say, we'll see you in about two and a half years when these are ready. We came to the conclusion that was not the right thing for the families there, mainly because we don't have any place that people could go and find low-income housing. So what we decided to do was to take certain sections, building here, you saw 96 units, we will move 96 families into those units, tear those down, build another, and so it'll be a gradual moving of people without disrupting their lives. So they are, they're living in Casey, they're going to move to Casey. And so that was our intent all along. So that's the reason we're here tonight, to ask your approval of changing some of the zoning, because the zoning as it stands now would not allow us to make these gradual changes and to end up with what the neighbors said they wanted when it's all over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one personal note, thank you so much for all your service and what you do for our community.
Hi, my name's Hunter G., Smith G. Studio, 713 Benson Street, East Nashville. It's nice to be here. Good to see you all.
Good to see you back.
Yeah. Little intimidating to be on this side of the podium. First, I want to thank staff for working with us on this. We had several meetings with Mr. Sloan, and Mr. Lehman, and Ms. Withers, and others, and have worked through a plan, not only for rezoning Kirkpatrick Park, which we're here to talk about tonight, but you'll also hear, probably will hear the councilmen talk about coming soon. Within a few months, we'll have an overall SP for the entire Casey redevelopment that we'll be, be bringing before you. As you all know, and as Mr. Mosley just said, MDHA has embarked on what is going to be a groundbreaking project, not just for Nashville, but for the country. This is one of the largest mixed-income developments of its type, and the largest redevelopments of public housing into this type of mixed-use and mixed-income development across the country. It's, it's going to be, as Jimmy Granberry, who sits on the MDHA board, says, it's going to be a game changer for this, this side of town. But it also is going to affect the lives of some of our, some of our citizens of Nashville that currently live in homes that are, that are, that are no longer, that are obsolete, really. So those 716 units there are still there, they've been there since 1940, and they need to be replaced. As you also know, this process started in 2013. Since then, we've had 21 public meetings. About 10 of those have happened since February, specifically for the Kirkpatrick Park project. We, we had a charrette, many, and I say, we, we are not only the architects on this, but we were involved in the master plan, helped lay out the master plan, went through the whole public process on that in 2013. We had a charrette, and for me, the charrette that we had, where we brought residents from Casey, we brought residents from the surrounding neighborhoods, all together, MDHA representatives all together in one room, and we deliberately made people sit at assigned seats at different tables, which mixed up everybody. And this was really deliberate, because we didn't want friends sitting together over here, and residents of Casey sitting over here, because we wanted people talking. And so we did that, and it was amazing, because basically, like Mr. Mosley said, what we all realized was that everyone's needs are the same in the neighborhood and the residents. And so that was kind of a moment in time that sort of changed, it built a lot of trust among residents, among the neighbors, among MDHA, and really was, to me, a turning point in what I think is going to be an incredible, incredible development. So the plan sets out the community's vision to replace one-for-one public housing, to minimize disruption and displace no one, as Mr. Mosley said. No one will be displaced. That is a commitment that MDHA made three years ago, and they're sticking to it. The plan sets out to reduce the concentration of poverty, and it sets out to improve community amenities and access to services. And so you might ask, how are you going to reduce concentration of poverty and not displace anyone? Well, there's several ways we're doing that. One, we expanded the footprint. Early on, the Casey proper property is about 63 acres. We looked at the surrounding area. Metro owns land where Public Works is, Metro owns land where the Sheriff's Department is, Metro owned Kirkpatrick Park. CWA Apartments was Section 8 housing, owned by the Communication Workers of America. There's several other properties around. We said, we should be looking at this entire footprint, and so MDHA did. So the master plan and the redevelopment district that MDHA put in place encompasses more than just the envision, just the Casey properties. Secondly, we said, we can deconcentrate poverty by mixing both workforce and market-rate housing in it. So the overall plan calls for a third public housing, a third workforce housing, and a third market-rate housing. third market rate housing. Then we can, we said, well, there's a need for grocery, there's a need for pharmacy, there's a need for commercial space here. So we said, we can bring in commercial uses and rezone the property for, for grocery and pharmacies and other needs that the residents have. And then we can ultimately do that by utilizing the little bit of vacant land that we have so we don't have to displace anyone. We can leave everyone in their homes in those 716 units if we have the land to build on. There's a little bit of land there now that MDHA is currently building us, I believe, a 70-unit, 70-unit apartment building near Public Works. This is the only other place to do that, and that's Kirkpatrick Park. Now, MDHA immediately went to Kirk, went to the plant, to the Parks Department and said, this is how this is going to work. Our plan has a giant park in the middle of it. Do we have the board with us still? A 12-acre park in the middle that stretches from one end of Casey to the other, and it'll be a brand-new park that MDHA will develop. And in exchange for this new park that we're going to give to the city and ultimately to the Parks Department, we would like to utilize Kirkpatrick Park, which even the Parks Department stated was underutilized, even though some people do use it, but it's underutilized and it's not very well placed. It's, you can see where the, the current request is. That's the Kirkpatrick Park. Just below that is the Central Park. So I'm going to, real quickly, since I'm almost out of time here, because I want to reserve a little bit of time for rebuttal, hit on a few things about this. Jason hit on most everything, but this is consistent with Nashville next. It's the same number of units that we could design, that we could build by right today. We're currently zoned RM20. We could do 96. I can explain that in the rebuttal if you need me to. The SP will provide added level of review from planning. We are creating transitions, as they talked about, to the neighborhood by creating only two stories along Ninth Avenue, some neighborhood parks that you can see in the plan. There may be some question about trees. Hawkins Partners is on our team. They've looked at every tree on the site. I can get into the specifics about this, but we're replacing the few trees that we're tearing down with 46 new street trees around the surrounding property, 60 shade trees, and we're saving a number of trees in a newly planned park that wasn't part of the original plan at Kirkpatrick Park, a small little pocket park. The existing park, 7.1 acres. The new Central Park that's planned is around between 11 and 12 acres. MDHA is currently working on a community services master plan in the area just under, just south of Kirkpatrick Park, where Martha O'Brien Center is. Again, I'll remind you, we had 21 meetings leading up to this since, since 2013. We're going to continue. We've got two more town hall meetings before the public hearing at council, and I'm going to reserve the last 35 seconds of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else?
In favor?
In support?
There were more of us earlier.
We're sorry about that. Please say your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name, my name is Vernell McHenry. I live at 812 South Seventh Street. I'm a resident of Casey. I have been to all of the meetings that they're having, and I think it's a good idea for our neighbors that we're going to have a new place to live, places for our children. And I think, I would like for you to approve that we get the extra grounds we need for building.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Marsha Edwards. I live out of county, but my address for most of daytime hours is 711 South Seventh Street, which is the Martha O'Brien Center. I am the executive director there. I just want to reiterate that the process has been extraordinarily thorough and open. There have been many, many meetings. I know that because lots of them have been held at Martha O'Brien Center, because we have a big gym that can accommodate a lot of people. Hundreds of Casey residents have participated, and you may hear that they, there has not been information. The website has been there. There have been, always been opportunities for people to talk to MDHA. There's always seven or eight staff members there at all those meetings. So we've had a really great open process, and what you see is the result of many, many people in East Nashville and in Casey Place coming together for a new community. I want to say this, and that is, is that the density that is planned, which is not as, as dense as it could be, but that is planned, is critical, because without this park, we can't keep that most important promise that we will not displace families. We have 900 families. With CWA, it's almost 1,000. If we are going to keep that promise, and we are going to be that city on a hill, this is literally the hill, then we are going to have to use that park and use it at the density level that we, they have been planned for. We've done this other ways. We have Three Hope Six projects, and I know that, and I know the suffering of those projects, because I have families that, in Casey homes, that were moved twice with the promise of coming back. So this is a new day, and it is an opportunity for us to be a model, not just here in Nashville, but for the country. Displacement and the impact on education, I cannot even go into that, because it is such a pervasive part of what happens to these communities. So thank you so much. Please approve.
Anyone else?
Yes. Good evening. John Zerker, Resident Association President, James Casey Homes. It's a great day for Casey. And the reason I say that is because when this program started off on revalidation of Casey, everybody had to move. And one of my biggest pleas was, don't put us on a reservation. We got gentification that's going on, where the haves versus the have less. This project at least gives us an opportunity not to have to move. But in the beginning, the conversation was, yes, you'll have to move, but you'll be able to come back in a few years if you qualify. That Hope Six that she mentioned earlier, they displaced 500 people, 181 people were able to resign. This plan that they have for Casey now, from Casey to Casey, the only way it's going to be successful is that we are allowed to have that property. We have some folks in opposition to this. I see so much anger in not wanting us to be there. This is about the only way we're going to be able to survive this thing, because there's no new development in Nashville for poor people. I have major concerns when it comes to this city and what's going on for no new development and for some opposition that wants us out of here. I'm talking about poor people. This is an opportunity with RAD, Residential Assistance Demonstration, for us to be able to be a part of a process and part of a renewed community. Nashville's changing so miraculously that if we don't get this approved for this, this site rezoning, then God help us all, because I don't know where, where do people, poor people go? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Now, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Sorry to keep you all. Thank you for having me today. My name is Matt Schuetzen. I live at 605 South 10th Street, just a stone's throw from this site. First, I want to say in response, I want all of my Casey neighbors to stay. That is exactly what I want. But I urge you to disapprove this agenda item and support the existing community plan and open space at the corners of Eighth, Ninth and Sylvan, where the Shelby Hills and Casey Neighborhoods coalesce. I love that my neighborhood is a mixture of workforce housing, public housing, industry, commercial nodes and open space. The property in question sits adjacent to Kirkpatrick Elementary School and Kirkpatrick Community Settlement. It's well-established, and I believe it well-planned, and those three things work together. Unfortunately, I don't have millions of dollars of funding behind me or political clout. I come only with a heart of logic and conservation, as well as a desire to do right by my past, present and future neighborhoods. I feel that it's reasonable for all people, as citizens that contribute, and the amount that they are able to, local, state and federal coffers, to count on the preservation of established public open spaces. I also feel, and this is a big point for me, I feel like Smith's G. Studios creative team is capable of finding a positive architectural solution that keeps everybody there, even keeping this park in its current location and form. You may be saying to yourself, of course, this 6'4" hippie is asking for the preservation of his most proximate basketball court in Frisbee Field. And I am. But I also think that it's a big part of sustainable urban living and social justice and makes the most planning sense. Thank you again today for your time and consideration. I please ask you to disapprove this proposal, and again, with all due respect for the architects and my neighbors, I think these are all great people. I just have this bit of a disagreeing point of view.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for staying late, once again, and for all your service to our county. I know it's a volunteer basis, and Council Lady Allen and I spend lots of times listening to public hearings, and so I know what that, what that is like now as a new council member. I want to thank all of our neighbors who came out today. One of the things I'm really most proud of is that, even though many of them weren't able to stay today, but I'm really proud of the fact that MDHA, our neighborhood groups, Rediscover East, a lot of different organizations have come together and made it our goal to engage the residents of Casey in working on their own solution to what their housing is going to look like. And that process has gone on for approximately three years. I think it's really appropriate that some of our residents were able to come out today to get to that next phase of self-advocacy, where they can come out and explain to decision-makers such as yourselves today about a community plan, you know, what, what is in their best interest. It's their best interest to retain a park that the Parks Department themselves have decided is somewhat underutilized, and the Parks Board voted last July in a motion to support basically this policy change, which is to put housing here in exchange for getting a larger and more, more integrated and better programmed park in the future. That was a Parks Board decision that was based on community feedback, and I'm really proud of our Casey residents who came out today, even though all of them couldn't stay that late. Many of our Casey residents sometimes have transportation issues, or they work quite a bit. I myself can take off vacation time from work to come to these hearings, but not everyone has that luxury. So I just want everyone to really bear that in mind, the amount of Casey resident support for this plan that has been, that has gone in. Even as recently as a couple of months ago now, we're having kind of weekly town hall meetings for the charrettes for the different design phases. I was able to join Casey residents as Hunter G. brought up different kinds of architectural designs and landscape, and what do you think about this pocket corner? And just to hear those, those concerns from parents, well, I don't like this, what about stairs? Are people going to be congregating there? Are my children going to be safe playing there? Again, I think what really that brings home to me is that the Casey residents want the same things for their families that we all want, and Casey residents are in support. In addition to the Casey resident support, I do know that you have a letter in your files from Adam Yaki, from the adjacent Shelby Hills Neighborhood Association. That Neighborhood Association has been very plugged in, and at a recent Shelby Hills Neighborhood meeting, Juanita Trauber, who was an MDHA employee, came out to the Neighborhood Association meeting and talked through some of these things. I'm pleased to see their support. There's also, you have letters of support from some of our long-term historic Edgefield neighbors, Carol Williams and Carol Norton. I'm sure her name's that you all know, and neither Carol was able to make it this evening, but they did submit letters in support of this plan. So again, really, that's the thing for me, as a representative, I want to make sure that everyone's represented. Our East Nashville neighborhoods as a whole are very, very organized, very capable of writing letters and coming to your hearings, but our Casey residents often don't have that much access, and I'm just really proud of the efforts that they have put into this process to shape their future, including placing housing on this park, and would encourage your support of that request. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. 35 seconds.
I think it was 36.
We'll do it. We'll give you a minute.
I wanted to recognize a couple of other folks that didn't speak, that have been involved in the project from the very beginning, Bob Borzak and Randall Gilbert. There may be others on the CAG here that didn't speak, that are, I'm sure, here in support. When we bring the rezoning back through for the entire Casey development, we will also be bringing a community plan amendment. That community plan amendment will include open space for that entire 12-acre park there, as well as an additional 10 acres of civic space for the community campus, community services campus just south of that. As Mr. Withers mentioned, in July of 2015, the Parks Board approved to transfer this property to MDHA. So with that, we can build 20 units to the acre today under the current zoning. That's about all my time. Thank you for your severely undercompensated service.
Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing closed, and I just want to make a quick note, is that as your Parks Board representative, we unanimously approved this, and we had a lot of discussion on the Parks Board for the displacement of the kids and having park. And so the Parks has a definite plan on making sure that the kids has, have access to all of the facilities and the types of facilities that are currently residing at this park. So I want to make sure that the, the board, the commission knows that. So how about we start with you, Mr. Chairman?
When this was first presented to us, I thought it was one of, it's a great idea, and I still do today. I know when they tore down the projects on 40th and on Charlotte Avenue, those people were displaced, and a lot of them never came back to their old neighborhoods or to their, to their neighbors. They lost that contact. It's such a great way to move people into a new community. After 75 years, these are worn, they need to be replaced. I think it's proven with the other projects that were torn down that the crime rate lowers. It's going to be an inconvenience for this park to not be there for a while, but it's going to be replaced in the, in the future with another one. It's just a super plan, and I'm hoping that once this one is completed, or even before it's completed, that the one on Mercerboro Road certainly needs the same, same things happened to it, that whole neighborhood. And with that, I'm going to jump ahead of all the Commissioners, and I make a motion that we approve.
Second. Well, there's been a proper motion and a second. And any more discussion? Counsel lady?
I just want to say thank you, thank you for preserving, for promising more green space than we're starting with now. I think that's important. I also think maintaining those trees is critical. I'm glad to know Hawkins Partner is on that, because I deliver meals in that area well, and, and every time I go into that neighborhood, I revel in the lovely trees that I think make that a beautiful place for the Casey residents to live in now, and, and I think that's important to preserve for them. One question, just with regard to, is Kirkpatrick School next to this park, and are there arrangements for kids to have playground and running around space in the interim?
Yeah, that's part of the Parks Plan. The department is working on plans to make sure that no kids, that all the kids will have the same exact park facility.
Excellent. Okay, I think that's important. That's, this has my full support. I know it will be hard to have the interim process, but in the end, it's, it's more green space. I think it's, it's a great project.
And the MDHA chairman heard that, you know, we want to get going on these other projects, Mr. Chairman, just?
Well, I, just something you know, we received from HUD a $500,000 check last week to begin a similar process for the Civic of Nature and Better. So that's good news, and we just made an application for a $30 million Choice Neighborhood grant, and so if we're fortunate to get that, lots of good things will happen in the other neighborhoods, but we got a plan, whether we get that or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just, as a former, and we have to go, you know, but as a former Edgefield resident, Sixth and Russell for nine years, and I left right about the time this started, discussion started. We had different Councilmembers, we had a different mayor, we had a different situation, and I used to walk through Casey to go vote. I used to volunteer for Martha O'Brien and still donate, and I'm proud. That's all I, I mean, I'm just really proud and proud of us as a city. I'm proud of this plan. This is the right way to do this, so let's do this and do some more of them. But I, I was skeptical at the beginning, and I, as the, as the neighborhood changed, and I was, I sold my house two and a half years ago and moved to White Creek. But, but, you know, we all, we were going to have to, to, to work together, and this is an example of, of doing that, so I'm, I'm really grateful to be able to vote on this, bring more of these types of things to us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, there's been a proper motion. We'll have to vote on these separately, so items, we're voting on the first item, which is 13A. There's been a proper motion. Second, all in favor of item 13A? Say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. Now on 13B, is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor of item 13B?
Aye.
Say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. Bill's pass.
Quickly, thanks to Ralph and Julie Mosley for all of their service to our city. You are heroes.
Very quickly, if you, we are on, is there a historic, Mr. Tibbs has left.
He did.
Parks, I've already, make sure that you participate. already, make sure that you participate in the strategic planning process in Parks. If you have not, go to the website, and you can participate, and I urge everyone on this Commission to do that. We, on the Executive Committee report, let's, as I mentioned earlier, if it's okay, if there's no objection, I'll talk to our Executive Director, Mr. Sloan, and we will schedule a workshop for infrastructure. And I'll get with the staff, and we'll do that. Is there any objection to that, or Jim?
Maybe in lieu of the retreat, that that serve as the retreat topic.
Maybe we could get credit. No, I'm just kidding. Okay.
You might be able to.
Well, we might be able to get a credit, we'll see. Maybe we could get our, some of our continuing education credits as well, but it could be possible if we do it right. So that's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, that's, but we'll try to do that. So there's no objection to doing the workshop, and we'll do it in lieu of, or...
I love meeting.
Okay, all right. Legislative update.
Continuing to have good meetings on affordable housing stuff, and we'll talk more about that next week.
All right, and I want to remind the Commission that there's a special call meeting on inclusionary housing, it'll be July 21st, but it's going to be at the Midtown Hills Police Precinct, because it's not going to be here. And then also, location change for the following meeting, July 28th, which will be at the Metro Public Schools Administration Building, where we've had it before. So make sure that you have that correct on your calendars. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Just something.
Adjourn.